Good morning. It is nine o'clock in Lion County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, October 3rd, 2024.
All right, we'll start over again. Nine o'clock and we're going to start the Lion County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, October 3rd, 2024. Today's agenda, action will be taken on law items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restriction must be reasonable and must and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Boards. And during this meeting, they convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. Our meeting may break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch. Today's roll call, we have all commissioners in chambers. Today's invocation given by Mitch Forster of New Hope Bible Fellowship. Please rise.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we address you as the creator of heavens and earth, the creator of us, the people you have put on this planet. Thank you, Lord, for giving us life, for being a good God who loves your people and wants the best for us, and we pray for that today. That in this county, in this state, this country, we pray, Lord, that you would keep us free from treachery, from tyranny, and we pray that for generations to come, our kids and grandkids can grow up in a country that will be free and enjoy the prosperity that you have blessed us with. For this meeting today, Lord, we pray that each person presenting will be at peace in their hearts and everything will be done decently and in order and peacefully. We pray that you would help us to see the truth of everything that is considered. Give us discernment, Lord, and we ask for your wisdom, for your knowledge, and we do pray, Lord, that all of these things will be accomplished according to your will. We do pray this prayer in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks, will you listen to the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. We consider the republic what it stands for, a nation under God, made of this one, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. We have any public participation? I don't see anybody in chambers. I don't see anybody on Zoom. So we will move on to item number five for possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Commissioners, any input on the agenda? Okay, yeah, Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull agenda item 13A.
Okay. And I believe we are also pulling 6A. So at this time, we're going to pull those three. Do we have any public input on the agenda?
Clarification, you're pulling 13 to discuss, 6A to remove.
13A is going to be pulled.
Completely off.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the wording wording isn't quite what we need it to be, is why.
All right, so right now I have 6A and 13A being pulled from the agenda, so could I have a motion on this action item?
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approved the agenda as presented, removing items 6A and 13A.
Got a second?
Second.
Sir Jacobson.
Okay, so I'll take Commissioner Keller on that. So we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes five zero. So we are skipping 6A and moving down to seven. We're at Commissioners and County Manager Reports. So let's start with Commissioner Hendricks this morning.
Like, like all of us, I attended the NACO conference and there was lots of good information and training on that. I attended the Comstock Historical District Board meeting and last night I attended the Stagecoach Advisor Board meeting.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really don't have much to report. I did attend the NACO conference and as usual, there was a lot of good information presented and I certainly encourage, I was really actually encouraged by the fact that all five of us attended and I hope that that continues. The only other thing I want to report on is on a personal note. You guys know my sister Irene L. Britton, who does the invocation for us occasionally. She was without power for five days after Hurricane Helene. But other than the loss of the food, that was really all the damages that she sustained, but a house in her neighborhood had a tree fall in the middle of it. So, well, she, so a little bit of spoiled food's a small price to pay.
Yeah.
That's it.
Commissioner Keller?
I attended the NACO West Region Meeting, also the NACO, that's National, National NACO Rural Action Caucus, and then I also attended the NACO Annual Conference and in that conference, I also attended the General Board Meeting. And we, it was a very appreciative, strong showing from Lion County, all our department heads and manager and all the commissioners there, shows that we're really involved. So I really appreciate that. That's it.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman. I attended the NACO Conference as well, really enjoyed it. I missed last year, I had busted arms, so I'm glad I didn't go through that again. But I really enjoyed the public land session. I think there's some things that we can do, steal from other counties to bring a little more revenue generator into Lion County around all these solar panels going in and, and so hopefully we jump on some of that bandwagon. With that, I've got some suggestions for future board meetings, but that'll come later. So, thank you, Chairman. Oh, one more thing, the Fernley Boys and Girls Club sit on that board, had a board meeting there, but we have our big awards banquet tonight in Fernley and recognizing three young adults, so very proud of those kids and, and of course, all the work the Boys and Girls Club does and, and I do want to give a shout out to all the donors that helped sponsor this event and cover the expenses as it is, it is having a Boys and Girls Club in your community is quite an undertaking as far as generating revenue. But there's, you know, there's 1,200 kids that take advantage of the club in Fernley and then they also hire a bunch of high school kids to help run that. So it provides a lot of daycare, a lot of after-school activities. And so I just want to give the Boys and Girls Club in Fernley a shout out as well. Thank you, sir.
I also attended the Nevada Association of Counties Conference last week. The meetings that we had were really quite informative. The one I really appreciated was, as we've mentioned here, was the land issue for just dealing with what we are up against for most of our projects that come here from the federal government. Also, the past legislators and termed out legislator, kind of a conference discussion group up on the stage. And what was very interesting on that is that some of our past legislators, being Democrat and Republican, discussed how 12 years, 15 years, whatever ago, there was a lot of interworking between the two parties in the legislature. And that they were a little concerned that nowadays it's just all confrontational. And the only way you can really get anything done for the state of Nevada is if you work together. So they felt that their old philosophy was, what do I do for Nevada? Not what do I do for me? What do I do for my party? And that's, I think, the attitude that anybody in a position representing a county or representing the state have to sit here and ask themselves, how am I going to help my county or how am I going to help my state? Now, how am I going to get elected again and help my party? That's not what we're here for. So I was very appreciative of their attitude. I would hope that they can really be contagious and get some of the other people to feel that same way that they have in the beginning of their terms many years ago. Also had a meeting with Lion Copper and Gold. They were discussing how they're going to reprocess a lot of things up in the Anaconda mining area. Very interesting meeting and learned a lot of issues that they're dealing with right now. And then, of course, last night, the Smith Valley Citizens Advisory Board. And that was pretty interesting because we kind of discussed how to get the community of Smith Valley more active in that board meeting every month. So we're hoping to get a lot more people to come in there, other than when we have issues that everybody's angry about. That always gets lots of people there, but we'd like to have more people come there for just the general business and input for the community. Other than that, we will move on to the County Manager's Report.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. So I'm sure that you saw the press, press release that we sent out regarding the protest letter that was submitted to BLM regarding their programmatic solar plan. And so I did want to let the board know that I did hear back from the governor's office as well as the state director from BLM on that. That the governor's office is going to be taking a look at our concerns as a part of their consistency review. And so we'll be working with them on that. So I'm really, really happy with that, that outcome and we'll see if we can get some traction. Did have a meeting week or two ago now with Libra Solar, that's a solar project that's going in Mineral County, but accessing that project through Lion County. And so we had, we began some discussions regarding access there and we're going to continue to work with them. They're going to come back with a proposal to address some of our concerns. We're working on some stuff on our end, so I did want to let the board know that that's something that's going as well. Other than that, just been pretty busy. Attended the same meeting that Commissioner Hawke did with Lion Copper and Gold, working on a number of other, other issues. Working on a bunch of ordinances right now too, so stay tuned. Those will be coming soon. So happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So move on to elected official reports, item eight.
Warren Chief Deputy Mitch Ranning in Lion County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Pope is not feeling well this morning, so he asked me to come down and speak with the folks. I appreciate you having me. I wanted to brief you and answer questions for you regarding the very large scale law enforcement operation up in Stagecoach and Silver Springs yesterday. So very long-term investigation. Our detective's been working out with some federal partners and some other local law enforcement partners in the region. I have some notes that I'm going to work off of, just so I make sure that I get all of the different entities there. We had 65 law enforcement officers in Silver Springs and Stagecoach yesterday, which, as I'm sure you're aware, is almost the entire size of the Lion County Sheriff's Office, right, right there in one location. So this, this included people from the Lion County Sheriff's Office Patrol Division, the Major Crimes Investigations Bureau, the Special Investigations Unit, Lion County SWAT, Carson City SWAT, Douglas County SWAT team was out. The Central Lion County Fire Department was here with us, the DEA or Drug Enforcement Agency was with us, HSI or Homeland Security Investigations was out, the Nevada State Police Division of Investigations was out, the Nevada State Police Hyper Patrol were with us, the Canvas Compliance Board and Battleborn Medevac from down here in Yarrington, we're all up in the, up in the area. So like I said, very large-scale law enforcement operation. Don't get too far into the details of how we got to this point, just after eight o'clock yesterday morning. We executed two search warrants, one out off Ninth Street in Silver Springs, the other out almost right at the intersection of Break Heart and Fort Churchill, there in Stagecoach. On two very large marijuana growing operations. Our investigators believe that these marijuana girls were cartel-related, based on some financial records that they had, as well as the people that they observed coming in and out of the operations. We used several SWAT teams over at one and then the state and a couple other SWAT teams out of the other operation. One of the traffic stops that led to this incident, our deputies located receipts for AR-15 M4 magazines and large quantities of ammunition. Surveillance confirmed that we had people on site in both locations with scoped rifles and some other weapon systems out and about. One of the big concerns that we have whenever we start talking about marijuana grow operations is the massive amount of chemicals and unsecured power and things like that in the area. Our officers did encounter those things at both of these locations, which is where the Marijuana Compliance Board, some of those federal agencies and partners come into play, helping us mitigate those things and make sure that they're properly disposed of and managed. And we don't have them spilling out or causing a hazmat issue into the environment, particularly like that Break Heart situation down there by the river. We want to make sure that's all contained properly. During the course of these operations, we ended up arresting 10 people. I believe of six at the Break Heart location, four out at the Ninth Street location. HSI and Homeland Security are working to get all those folks identified, make sure that we have immigration statuses and we know exactly who they are. And we don't have any additional links that we need to track down as far as investigations go. That's going to be a little bit of a lengthy process as there are some language barriers and things like that, which is why that, that federal connection for us is significant. After this is all said and done, very significant amount of marijuana has recovered. I'm sure you saw the photos on our press release. If didn't, I'd be having to get you over a copy then, but the press release that we put out said just over a thousand pounds of marijuana. The final number that I got last night said we were well over 3,500 pounds of marijuana and there were 1,700 plants. Some of these plants were planted in the ground, were small, they were going to a full-time, year-round operation, it appeared, there in the hoop houses that they had set up. This group was kind of unique in regards to that, is, is guys had taken and dug those hoop houses down into the ground. So if you were standing eye level on the property, you almost couldn't see them coming out of the ground. They had to step down into them. So the drone operations and some of those things that we've talked about before became pretty significant in this investigation and they're still out there working this morning, trying to get all that mess cleaned up, make sure they manage all the marijuana with buds and things like that, get the property cleaned up. District Attorney Ry was out with us. Make sure that we get the evidence collection portion done correctly, how he wants to see it done, so we can get prosecutions on these cases. As well as providing us some legal guidance as far as managing all the evidence that's out there, as well as the asset forfeitures. Two large properties, trucks, trailers, all sorts of things like that, but we're going to be working with his office to try and do some asset forfeiture on to reduce the cost of the cleanups, as well as the law enforcement services that were utilized to accomplish a mission out there yesterday. No injuries or anything like that to our personnel, pretty smooth operation, all things considered, especially considering we had so many officers out and about in the area. The other thing I want to bring up, not related to that, we are continuing to hire, at a pretty significant rate at the sheriff's office. I think we're down to five open positions right now. We have 13 in background, so we're hoping to fill up those, those vacant spots here coming into the end of the year. We have five deputies over at the academy right now. We just got reports back on them. Everything's going very, very well with those deputies and we're expecting to have them back on the road right about mid-November. So hopefully at the end of the year, if things stabilize a little bit with people coming and going, we should be near full staffing coming into 2025. Do you have to answer any questions? If you haven't.
Question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not really a question, just a comment. One of congratulations. Good, good job on you guys. This never ceases to amaze me, the links that people will go to to break the law. If they would put that into productive, beneficial efforts, they'd do a lot better. But thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So I believe that bail, if I read that report right, 70,000 per, have any, have they made bail, any of them, or the cartels just going to use it as collateral damage?
So as of this morning, they had made bail. Our investigators are working on getting those bail numbers kicked up. There's a little bit of investigation piece and some interviews and things like that that need to be done, as well as getting the, the weights and some of the testing finalized. But we had to get some preliminary bails set on those folks who we didn't run into an issue with, holding people without bail. But I am expecting those numbers to go up. And we told the, told the investigators that are monitoring that case that if anybody starts seeing bail there, we need to have those conversations so we don't have a cartel or somebody come in and use illegal funds to try and bail people out. That there are some processes we can use to prevent that from happening. That being said, I'm not anticipating the cartel coming up to try and bail these guys out or, or, you know, some, some other criminal enterprise trying to get them out of jail. That'd be a little bit inconsistent with what we generally see in these cases, but we are monitoring that to make sure it doesn't happen.
Right on. And then I chatted with you a little bit earlier about question four on the ballot. That shouldn't affect whether it passes or not, prison work crew?
Yes, so the ballot question, as I understand it, has to do with removing slave labor essentially from the law as a permissible punishment. The legal research that we've done on that and the folks I've talked to indicate that would not affect our jail work crews as, as they currently stand, because those folks are volunteering to participate in that work crew. They're not sentenced to it or being drug out on a Chan gang or something like that. They, they like to participate in those events. Obviously, anytime, anytime there's a change in law or something like that, we get, we get attorneys involved and in courts can do, you know, kind of anything they want. But the, the folks that, the legislature and the legal representatives we talked to are confident that wouldn't affect our operations.
Thank you and good job on that. That was something else. That was a big bust. So probably good practice to get all together too and work together. Secritize it. Did you video it so we can watch the whole thing shake down? I love that kind of stuff. I think it's great.
There's some stuff around. I'll have to get with y'all while we can, we can get you spun up on it.
Alls I could hear when I was reading that is bad boys, bad boys.
Well, thank you for the great job you guys are doing out there. Hopefully the word gets out and they stay out of our county for the most part, but thank you very much. Great job. Yeah, and I, I would say that we had the cleanup day out there at Hillcrest and Smith Valley Cemetery and had four inmates. They seemed to be pretty happy, couldn't be slave labor. They actually get two lunches instead of one. They get fresh air. They were very happy to be out there working, actually. They, they sounded happy. They were near me. I was cleaning up the gate area and they were cleaning up the front of the, the frontage area on 208. But seemed like a pretty good, you know, a pretty good activity for them to go out and get some work done for the community and I think that we can keep that partnership going and make sure that some get out and have a little fresh air and a little exercise. So worked out great. Thank you for all the work you did up there. Super operation. Appreciate you kind of cleaning up that area that cartel's trying to cultivate. Anything further, Commissioner?
I listened to the report on this last night at the advisory board and they said the latest estimate was the street value of what you confiscated was almost 18 million. Is that still correct?
Yes, that's so correct.
So are we going to sell that to the actual retail stores and? No? No use wasting those funds, but all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other elected officials that snuck in? Okay, yes. Mr. Lindberg?
Stacy Lindberg, Lion County Park Treasurer, for the record. I haven't been down to give you an update on my office because we have been crazy busy, so I just wanted to bring you up to speed on what we're doing. We've actually had six elections, two with the public and, and three mocks, and we had to miss one mock election for the new top-down system because in the midst of that, we're processing over 40,000 tax payments. So myself and my crew of six have done an amazing job. I've just, I'm so pleased with them. But we're working on the general now. I just wanted to let you know that we dropped our sample ballots on 9/27. We dropped 46,377 sample ballots in Lion County. Our registration is way over about 51,000 now and we're processing close to between 50 and 100 registrations or third-party notifications a day, just trying to get prepared and get the ballots out for the general election. We had a great turnout. We had two days of poll worker training. We concentrated on poll etiquette and processes, safety, how the observer, the observers, and we are going to have some media at both our Fernley and Dayton locations. So we addressed how best to deal with those, where they can be, things like that. So they don't impede our voters. That's my main concern is getting the voters in through the lines and out. We're setting up quick drop locations, so they're not standing in line just to drop a ballot until there'll be two lines, one for check-in for electronic machines, one for, for those sample ballots to try to speed things up. We have 67 poll workers now, which is pretty exciting. So we got some really good volunteers. The sheriff's department is handling, the VIPs are handling all of our transportation for our secure ballots for us. Search and rescue has volunteered to help our poll worker set up and tear down our polling locations, because we were setting them up with around 134 voting machines, 53 poll pads. And you'll see our lovely 72-page sample ballot with, which one of our lovely commissioners just found a typo in, which we'll have to post at our location. So for clarification, the term for a senator is six years. And we have a printed four with six in parentheses. So we're just going to have to put out a notice at our poll locations, just to clarify the terms. But out of 72 pages, I think that was pretty good for, for our first full general sample ballot. So luckily we didn't, that won't cost our taxpayers any money. So I just, the news transition with the software has been a real bear. It is amazing. It, it, it processes voters. It allows us to send notices through the system. It statewide checks any duplicate voters. It communicates within two to five minutes when that voter is checked in. So they don't, they're not able to vote at a different location. It constantly communicates with the database, so I can basically watch all the poll locations, check the machines, make sure they're working, check how many people were processing at any given time to make sure that everything's going well. So I think we've, we've done a lot of work and, and like I said, my team, I'm very proud of them. And you'll see some issues in the media from other counties, but luckily we, we've been pretty much under the, the radar there because we haven't had any of those problems, which I'm grateful for. But I'm here to answer any questions. If you have heard something that is of interest to you, that you might want some input on or, or understand what I am about.
I, I appreciate everything that you do, but as you know, I still am not happy at all with the state taking this over. This whole top-down thing, I think, is absolutely not how it should be. It removes the power one step further from the people and that's not how it should work. But I do appreciate your diligence, especially with what you've done with those ID cards. Appreciate that.
Yeah, maybe I should address that, Timmy. So one thing that we did, the state tried to, they, they told all the counties that they were going to send out our voter registration cards, because it should be at their expense, because They, they told all the counties that they were gonna send out, out our voter registration cards because it should be at their expense because they changed all the voter ID numbers. And included in that voter card, they put a signature verification on one side of the postcard where they're asking voters. optionally to sign it. Birth date, social security number, or last four of your driver's license, just on a postcard. And I was like. That makes no sense to me with the privacy issues and things like that that we have. So I, I opted out of that, and that's one reason why we might see some complaints that our voter cards. Didn't go out timely is because I didn't want that going out to our voters in Lyon County. I think it's too much of a privacy risk. Um, cause they're just coming back in the mail open. So, um, that was a concern. So what we did is we just, we just put some important dates and, and the seal of Nevada, and that's coming out on our cards, and there's no reply necessary. Thank you. Forgot about that.
Thank, thank you for that as well. Cause those, those cards, when I got them, were going right to trash.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of, a lot of clerks are just handling, it's, it's really bad. And. Thank you that I didn't do that. It just didn't make sense. And it still doesn't.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Uh, thank you for everything too, Ms. Lindberg. Um, so I had a gal from Fernley reach out to me and. Whether she was telling me the truth or not, I don't know. It's, uh, but she said she was turned away as a possible volunteer at a poll. Where, is it because they were full up in Fernley as far as volunteers needed to help run the polls? Or?
I have not turned away any poll workers. Um. I have not, so I don't know who she spoke to. Um, I. If it was like Kim in Fernley, the clerk there, um, she does manage that poll location. She might have gotten that information from Kim if, if Kim felt her location was full, but we did discuss that in the training. And we can always use volunteers. Like I said, to have sixty-seven, I'm doing a happy dance. And, and actually I've turned away nobody. I found a position for everybody.
Thank you.
Has been interested.
Tell her anything? Uh, thank, yeah, I, I do appreciate it though, that you're opening up lots of voting machines and, and all the locations. Make sure that everybody has a good opportunity to get in and vote and not have to drive too far. So, thank you. Okay. Looks like anybody else is jumping up for elected officials or go to appointed official reports. It's okay, Josh. You can come up.
Let me guess, a Kansas City Royals tie. They must be doing all right.
Go Chiefs, go Royals, and even go Vikings, at least to the Super Bowl, right?
I don't like any teams, so I just have a generic football tie. Okay.
Josh Fuller, Lyon County Council of the Record. I wish I had really good news today. You're used to me bringing up bad news. Unfortunately, the news I have today, I found out this week. I'm a little concerned as we go forward. So I received our July consolidated tax information on Monday, that's when it came out, of course, because it's always two months behind the full week to get that information. July versus July, so July of twenty-four versus July of twenty-three, we declined approximately three hundred thousand dollars. For the county, Lyon County, so not the pot that goes out to all the county entities, but to Lyon County, so. That would, was anticipated to go up almost four percent, or a little bit of budgeted for as we were, were this year. Again, not sure. Thinking that there were signs the economy was gonna go the other way. But now we're starting to see the actual signs of the economy going down. Don't know how much will impact us on having feds reducing the rate by half a percent on the interest rates. Um, but we'll be watching as we go forward. I'm not panicked yet, but if you extrapolate three hundred thousand for one month and take that across the year, you can see that's a substantial amount of money that goes into the general fund. So my recommendation at this point is, first of all, don't panic. It's just one month where if you're in a baseball game, you're still in the first inning. Still a lot of the game to come, but the indications are it may be a bumpy ride for a while. So. Uh, Andrew and I have discussed this. My recommendation at this point is, we just continue as we're going. If we get. Further news that go along, goes along this vein in future months, we take a look at working with department heads to. Just try and stay within their budget and cut their expenditures back to, to things that are just essential and maybe not do our current budget for this year if we could. Um, but that's, that's the first piece, uh, significant piece. The second thing that I had is I had, um. A district court judge come and visit me yesterday morning, yesterday afternoon. And let me know that the juvenile cases have over-doubled on what they're seeing. A lot of that, my understanding, a lot of that has to do with the sheriff has taken a no. Or a zero tolerance policy in the schools, which means. Previously, the sheriff's office, this is what I understand. I'm having verified this with the sheriff's office, but according to the. District court, what the sheriff's office will do, is when there was a problem with the school, they sit down with the youth, they sit down with the parents and try and. Get that youth going in the right direction. It sounds like it goes almost immediately to court now instead of going through that type of process. So they're seeing a huge increase in the number of cases. On the juvenile side, which means they're asking as soon as possible for an additional position. Since I got the information yesterday afternoon, we're still going to price that out. Take a look at what that position would be because they want to create a new position, which would be a juvenile coordinator or something like that. To support the juvenile master judge, or the court master. That's approximately, I'm, my best guess is about a hundred thousand. That will be coming forward, fast forward out of contingency based on that. Maybe on your next agenda, maybe on the one after that. But I just wanted to make sure the board's aware of that. Um, in addition to that, on the good side, uh, Fernley Justice Court. Is, we receive, we have received three bids back on that expansion project. We anticipate the architect will go through and come up with a recommendation to the board. Most likely will be on your next agenda, the award that bid. Again, that's coming out of the art of funds. Uh, so we'll see how that processes forward. Initially. That's on schedule to. Tell the contractor to start November fourth. Start construction process. However, we have a little bit of a hiccup right now on two issues. First of all, the existing building. Was built over the property line. And so we can't get a building permit finalized until we get a boundary line adjustment done, which it is completed. You guys have approved it. We just have to get all the signatures of all the agencies on the Mylar map. And that takes some time. So we're working on that process. Um, hopeful that that will be done in time. The other piece that. Has dragged out a little longer than we would have liked is an interlocal agreement with the city of Fernley. For us to be able to move the justice court and their staff into city hall. Um, had a lot of conceptual discussions. Uh, I actually wrote up a draft agreement to start with and sent it off to the parties involved. Back in December, uh, it's just not moved very quickly. We're hopeful that that will be on your next agenda, but it may delay our start date a little bit longer depending on when the city of Fernley's able to. To see the final ones. Besides that, um, the Royals are in the playoffs, so we're not happy with it.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, so like a hundred-year flood, the Royals are back in action, so. So, uh, Mr. Foley, with, um, obviously the budget, bad news there, um, but keep an eye on that, keeping an eye on that. Uh, regarding the JPO with school relatively just starting. Cause I'm a big proponent of. The police and juvenile probation doing what they're doing in the schools, keeping those safe, um. But with school just starting, this may be. A peak. And then we should, hopefully we'll see a drop too. Is that any? Predictions from law enforcement on that? Um, or are they anticipating that it's just gonna stay? Cause word gets out, you just hardly see a fight it. And I, I'm at Fernley High School three days a week, but. You just don't, I, I'm not seeing really hardly any fights at all. Um.
Which is awesome.
So the police presence is obviously noticed and. I mean, I could see that, but so is this just a, a spike that we see at the beginning of school year? Word gets out and it'll level off. Is there some way we can expedite the process? Where parents settle with, I mean, is there a place we could get in place with juvenile probation? Uh, that eliminates the court. They pay their, they may pay a fine. Um, albeit maybe reduced by a couple hundred bucks so they don't have to go to court. I mean, is there something in there we can possibly work out that would expedite that process? Still hold the kid accountable for screwing up. Still teach them a lesson because restorative justice and some of that stuff, I'm not a fan of, but when you have parents in the pocketbook, things change. So is there something there we can do?
So I will ask those questions again with separation of powers from the courts and the legislative executive branch. Not sure where that is. I am. I'm a hundred percent thinking that there is a spike at this time and that's exasperating it. But the average caseload volume over the past few years has gone up significantly, significantly over double. Part of that's COVID-related, I, I realize, but the workload is still there as they're looking at it. But I'll have those conversations on the county manager. And we'll have those discussions. I do know the judge was pretty, uh. Very ready to have that as soon as possible. I'll, I'll explore those alternatives and see if any of those get to buy some time.
Right. And to be fair, I mean, there's times where our agenda is really huge too. We've got a lot to go through. And then there's some weeks that there aren't. So sometimes the courts may be a little bit busier. Uh, they signed up for the job, so. That's my two cents.
And. I appreciate that. I did want to let you know, I haven't heard it from just the judges, the public defender side. I've been hearing. Um, a significant amount of discourse over the past year on the, the juvenile. But very good thoughts.
No, I like the way that sheriff's doing that. I think that once that the word gets out, I think you'll see a slowdown. So I like the way that's going, so that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a couple of comments. One, kind of interesting how. With the separation of, of powers and the branches and. We're just supposed to give them their budget, stay the heck out of it. Well, we gave them a budget. They want to hire somebody else, let them. They got a budget for it. Um, the second thing, sorry, I, that gets me. Um, do you know if there are any polling locations at the Fernley Justice Center?
I, you're talking about polling for the upcoming election.
Yes, which is November fifth. If you're gonna start construction there, November fourth.
So the, the elections at the city hall.
Yes, curious because of the timing. And congratulations on the Royals. Making the playoffs, going from a hundred and six losses in the previous year to the playoffs most. Uh, the first team has lost that many games and then been in the playoffs the next year. So. Now go, let's see what they do against the Yankees.
Thank you.
Anything further?
I, I'm thankful for your report on keeping us up to date on everything. And I too am supportive of what the sheriff is doing in the schools. I think it's. Making a difference and it may take a little time for things to level off, but I think it's a step in the right direction.
Thank, thank you. You're dismissed.
Good to have that followed. Uh, good morning. Dr. Shaila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services for the record. I apologize for the late backup, but hopefully you guys got our, uh, pointed officials report for the human services department this morning. Our goal this year is to do this quarterly and starting this month is our first quarter. Going forward, it's gonna be on the second meeting of the month, so that way you'll be able to get this earlier than late backup. I won't be here at the second meeting of October, but I didn't want to put this off until November. So, um, here we are. October second, reporting on numbers up until September thirtieth. My program analyst, Rhiannon Baker, is amazing. Oh, I have a clicker. I was just gonna roll off the paper, but I could do a clicker.
Well, I hope so. It was a doctorate.
Yeah, right. I mean, sometimes we overthink things. Um. I'm not gonna go item by item on this. You guys have a really packed agenda, but what I want to do is share with you the. Concept behind what we're presenting to you. In years past, we've just presented quarterly numbers or monthly numbers with no frame of reference. So what I really wanted to do is present to you guys a report quarterly to keep you updated on how we're doing in response to what we told our granters we'd do. And in response to how this looked in previous years, to give you two points of reference for how things are going by each program. Um. That middle columns, that first column is our scope of work deliverables. That middle column is where we're at right now. This first quarter is a little tough because some of our grants are ending September thirtieth on a fiscal, a federal fiscal year. Some of our grants are in their first quarter because they're on a state fiscal year. So we, we balance those timelines. So you'll see one. Year end for some, quarter one. And then what we did last year, or what we did last year in the first quarter, if those numbers are available to us. As you'll see, the only two things to point on children's services, car seats did not hit the hundred and five that we anticipated. We don't purchase all of those car seats upfront because they expire. We purchase them as we go through them. So we don't have to, uh, worry about returning any funds. We don't have to worry about trying to install fifty extra car seats. Um, we have. Increased our number of texts that are certified, so hopefully this year we'll get back to that hundred and five. Or get up to that hundred and five that we, we anticipate being able to do. A lot of that comes down to, uh, car seat events as well and how many people show up for that and how well we do at marketing that. The other things that I want to note in between difference response and family support, which is sort of along the juvenile justice conversation that Mr. Foley just had with you, you do see an increase. So quarter one versus quarter one, there are significant numbers, uh, or significant increase, not so much on difference response. Those are DCFS cases. So there's a tiny uptick, but not potentially huge. But where you see a bigger piece is family support. Quarter one last year, so the same time, we have thirty-two referrals. This year so far in quarter one, we've had fifty-six, so almost doubled. Our family support program does work with juvenile probation to do early diversion. So any of their morning councils, our staff actually go out and do that for them. Meet with the family and try to address any of those barriers that might be, uh, causing these issues in those students before it rises to the level of. Justice involvement or further justice involvement. So that is potentially part of that uptick. Um, but other than that, um, business as usual in children's services. In senior services, you'll see a reduction in, uh, meals delivered or served versus what we were anticipating. Um, but you see our unduplicated counts are about on par. So unduplicated counts are the number of people getting the meals. The number of meals is how many times did they come back? So are they coming five days a week? Are they coming two days a week? What is that like? Um. You see some reduction in homemaker handyman, and that's because our grant notice of sub awards. Don't necessarily come on July one, so we can't start that work until those sub awards come. So first quarter is always a little bit behind as far as what the projections would be. Adult services, the big thing to note here is that we haven't received any of our notice of sub awards for this fiscal year, should have started July one. For our direct service supports, which would be, uh, emergency solutions grant, which helps our homeless. Our affordable housing trust fund and our welfare set aside. So we can't expend those funds until we get them. We don't know how much they're gonna be, and the state is just really far behind. Um, on our behavioral health services, this is a grand new division to us starting in twenty twenty-four. So we've just started bringing in grants to help support these needs in the community. Don't have any reference point for last year because they didn't exist, but we are starting to see, um, as you can see in, uh. Lyon County Resilient Families, we anticipated a hundred and forty-four referrals for the entire year. We've already received sixty-eight. So we highly underestimated the need for those services within the community when we were writing that grant. Um, public guardianship, we have twenty open cases right now. It shows that no closed next quarter. You'll see that a little different. We have had several people pass away. But they're not closed yet. That's a court process. Um, they don't, you know. Just close them the minute they die. We have to go through the termination processes in the court. And that's it for human services in the last quarter.
Uh, Chairman Akadi, thank you. Uh, just a big shout out to your team again. I know we rave about you, but all the grant money you pull in and. The services you provide our folks is really remarkable, so. Well done.
I too want to thank you for the work you're doing and helping me understand it a little bit, uh, better. And also I wanted to pass on that, uh, NACO, I got a lot of compliments about, about your work, so I just wanted to pass that on too. And also I wanted to pass on that, uh, NACO, I got a lot of compliments about, about your work. So I just wanted to pass that on too.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for what you do and also wanted to let you know that I appreciated seeing you at NACO and being involved in that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other appointed officials? Nothing on Zoom and nobody's coming up here. So we will go ahead and move on to the consent. I'm sorry, advisory board reports. Yeah, item 10. Do we have any hands up? No. Okay, we will move to 11. Consent agenda. Action will be taken on all items. All matters listed into consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Commissioners, anything from the consent agenda you'd like to hold or discuss? Anybody from the public?
Chairman Hockidy, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda 11A through 11K as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So we will move on to the regular agenda. And action will be taken on all items. Uh, public hearing on planning item 12A. For possible action to approve a request for a zoning map amendment from Lucas Homes and Development LLC to amend the zoning map designation from Fifth Rural Residential District, 20 acre minimum Title 10 to community commercial in conformance with the Sage Vista specific plan on 5.9 acres of an approximately 317 acre parcel generally located north of US Highway 50 and east of Bryce Street in Mark Twain. APN 016 dash 021 dash 30 PLZ 2024 dash 031. Staff report, Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners Lewis Carriola, Community, uh, Senior Planner, presenting. So the request, uh, to summarize is a zone change from an expired zoning district from Title 10 or old development code. Fifth Rural Residential District with a 20 acre minimum to community commercial. Uh, the subject parcel is located in Mark Twain. Uh, the vicinity map on the left shows that community's location uh, with Dayton to the west and Stagecoach to the east and more specifically, the site's located on the north side of Highway 50 and just east of, uh, Bryce Street. Bryce Street provides access to the Copper Canyon residential subdivision. The assessor's plat map here shows the size of the subject parcel at over 316 acres, uh, but notably the requested zone change is only 1.8% of that subject parcel at approximately 5.9 acres. Some images here, the one on the right provided by the applicant, the one on the left from Google Earth, uh, show that corner, uh, proposed for the zone change. Uh, the image on the right shows the fence that separates subject parcel from the Copper Canyon subdivision and the stormwater drainage uh, channel, uh, that extends, uh, to the south from Copper Canyon to the highway. The master plan designation for the site is, um, includes a suburban character district. Uh, suburban character districts, as we typically point out, usually have access to public utilities and existing roadways. Uh, in this case, the site is adjacent to Lion County Utility District's, uh, service boundaries to the west and Copper Canyon. Uh, the master plan designation is specific plan within the 2020 master plan, uh, map for Stagecoach. But additionally, additionally, uh, there is an approved specific plan, uh, the Sage Vista specific plan for this entire parcel. Uh, we, and to, to kind of expand a little bit on what that means, uh, specific plans are uh, large, comprehensive, but generalized, uh, plans for development at the master plan level. Uh, it's important to distinguish these from plan unit developments or other planning entitlements in the sense that uh, future development needs to always come forward with, uh, all the typical planning entitlements such as planned unit developments, tentative maps, conditional use permits. So again, the approved Sage Vista plan, and we see here on the side, approved in December of 2020, uh, contemplating general areas for types of uses. In this case, uh, this area was approved in the specific plan for commercial development here in the future. And now we're moving through some of those typical planning entitlements. So, uh, these images again provided by the applicant display the, um, the applicable zoning of rural residential 20 acre minimum. Uh, as we always discuss in our, our zoning discussions, uh, many parcels still hold those expired Title 10 districts. With the adoption of our current code Title 15, uh, we adopted zoning consistency matrix, uh, conversion chart essentially. Uh, to show the applicable zoning for properties, these images all show, uh, not just the subject site, but also the surrounding parcels all already run through the matrix, which I have to say I enjoy saying. Um, so here's the proposed, uh, zoning change to community cur- commercial. And notably, the, maybe we'll move back here even to the specific plan. Across, across Bryce Street in the west, there's already land, uh, subject to community commercial zoning. And we can see that, that pale green color here across Bryce Street also uh, with that, or I'm sorry, across the property boundary, not Bryce Street, across Bryce Street and the property band, uh, with community commercial zoning. So, uh, planning staff is currently reviewing and has already done the cursory review for boundary line adjustment for common ownership parcel, uh, land to the west of the subject parcel. Uh, and it includes the subject area for the zone change. One of the conditions for us to, to record the boundary line adjustment was for the applicant to come forward and propose this community commercial zone. Uh, in this image with color added by staff from the boundary line adjustment, that red line is the current property delineation and it would be extended out to the east to that new green line. So once this zone change were to be approved, um, was in place, then the entire area for the new parcel configuration would be community commercial zoning. Uh, the, the goal here is to prevent split zoning, but of course we'd have to execute the BLA after the zone change. So the findings for a zone change are found in, uh, chapter 22005 of Title 15. Uh, since there's only three findings, I can kind of run through staff's analysis pretty quickly here. Uh, the first finding requests consistency with the master plan. Uh, this area is already, uh, recognized as being appropriate for commercial for the Sage Vista specific plan. Uh, the, the thinking there of course is that it's right at the access to the highway. Uh, so that would be the appropriate location for commercial development. And the master plan does recognize, uh, this area is appropriate for commercial development. Uh, finding B, uh, addresses, uh, adequate public facilities as previously stated. Uh, the site is adjacent to, uh, the existing line, this existing, excuse me, Lion County Utility Department Service Boundary to the west. Uh, Lion County Utility Department Director is here, Director Buketa. Uh, and he did consult, uh, staff with, uh, potential process in the future when, when projects come forward. On the applicant will have to work with the, the with the, the utilities department and director on, uh, working to either annex into the service area or some other direction per the director. Uh, I would remind everyone that zoning changes cannot be conditioned. But that would be a requirement for development site. And of course we have Central Lion, uh, Fire District and the sheriffs to provide, uh, emergency services. Uh, compatibility with the actual master plan uses, we've already sort of touched on that with the existing designations. I don't know that I have much else to report on this other than, uh, the planning commission hearing of September 10, uh, 2024, uh, did include this item and they voted in recognition of approval unanimously 7-0. Uh, available for questions and there are representatives here.
Questions. Commissioner Keller?
So they've got their, uh, Sage Vista specific plan. I wanted you to kind of walk, walk me through this a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, that was done way before I was on the sport, right? So I don't have the plan in front of me. And so I can't read the plan. Where do I find the plan?
Uh, we could certainly send that to you. Um, I don't know that we have those posted online. I don't believe we do.
No. So in the, in the future, I would like to have that from the planning, uh, when we're doing a review on something with a specific plan. So I can see what's in the specific plan.
Yes, sir. So certainly I, I can, I mean, the applicants are here, perhaps representatives are here if you need to.
This is more about a specific plan since it's on the agenda. So I'm just going to kind of go over that real quick. Uh, can you tell us what, what we're obligated to because of a specific plan? In other words, they, they need the, the zoning and stuff. They've got the picture. I could see it in color here. But what, what is, what are we obligated to as far as when they do get a specific plan?
Uh, it's a good question. I, I don't know. That's a simple answer and I'm not sure the characterization of obligated really is, is how we would describe it from the planning perspective.
Um, use your own.
Sure. Yes. So, uh, specific plan, again, being at the master plan level provides a generalized development plan and most notably, how would utilities, roadways, um, drainage connections occur within a large landmass that currently does not have uh, public utility service areas, doesn't have roadways, doesn't have connections for stormwater. Uh, so again, since it's at master plan level, any future development needs to still come forward with conditional use permits, with planned unit developments, with tentative subdivision maps. And when we be making findings from the planning perspective, for instance, um, this first one about being consistent with the adopted master plan and underlying land use designation contained in the land use plan. In this case, the master plan designation was already specific planned. Uh, we see that kind of pale, um, tan color. And then they, in addition to the 2020 master plan designation, they have an approved specific. So I don't know if it's necessarily an obligation, but it certainly is a plan that we've approved generalized development. Yeah. Sure. I, the county manager pointed out, maybe it's, it's a miniature master plan.
Okay, so.
Come up with that myself, but I like the description.
Well, what I'm looking at is if we find something we don't like in it, but it's already been approved as a specific plan. If there would, if they've got so many houses, the roadways are already there. What are we looking at as far as, as it's already been approved as a specific plan?
No, I don't think that kind of granular level is already approved. I mean, the roadways can change. They are conceptual.
But we still have, uh, we can bring, or at least the departments can look at over the roadways and stuff in the future. I'm looking at what we're doing with the highway management plan, stuff like that. And make sure that everything in the future kind of works that way within a specific plan. And we have that option to kind of work through that with account, with the applicants, showing, showing them what our concerns are.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. It's conceptual. So I think maybe the takeaway is the types of land uses contemplated as well as maybe the densities for the different rural, for the different residential subdivisions. So they have areas designated for, you know, 9,000 square per box, 12,000 square per box, those types of things. But the actual maps have not been approved. They would all still need to be submitted. I, I would point out that this board and the planning commission and the public would all be made aware through the normal process, uh, for public care and entitlements.
Thank you. Uh, getting back to this one, I do like the way the road system is on the backside of that property and the existing, using the existing road to, to get it in and mix it all one line. So I'm kind of pretty happy with that.
Yeah, mine was basically just a, a catch on. You know, we, we're looking at the map here in the green area. You got 6.7 acre and we're dealing with 5.9. Is there a divot? Is there a bite out there up at the top? Uh, upper right hand and she, we're, it, give it in there.
B circle that it's bigger number there.
Well, you got 7-7, the other one's got 6-8 and this, and then we're talking about 5-9 or 6-7. So 7-7, 6-7, and we're looking at 5-9 on our approval here.
Um, so, so this image, and maybe I made things more confusing with all the colors. Um, that red line is a current parcel split. It is through the BLA that's currently being reviewed. It's going to be extended out to the east of the new green line. So that 7-7 would be the completed boundary line adjustment, which would include the 5.9 acres proposed today. Which I suppose that would be what 2.8 west. I, I, I think the surveyor's numbers will vary a little bit different from the assessor's numbers because they're way more specific. Um, but the zone change is just for the area that's on the subject parcel that then would be incorporated into the new boundary line adjustment configuration.
Okay. When I see all them numbers, you know, and they're all seem to be different on everything. I'm going.
You know, we'll be more cognizant of that in the future.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just to comment on that. If the the part of parcel B to the right of the red line is 5.9 acres and then you add in the, the part to the left of the red line, that makes it 7.7, it's not the scale.
No, I know what you mean. I was a little thrown by that as well. Um, but this is an image from the unapproved and not recorded boundary line adjustment. So those numbers will certainly be dialed in before it's recorded. I'm sure about the professional surveyors.
Okay. So any public input on this? Anything further? No? All right. Then we will move on to a motion for 12A.
Chairman Hockidy, I'll make a motion based on and including findings A, B, and C. Uh, I move that the Lion County Board of County Commissioners approve the request from Lucas Homes and Development LLC to amend the zoning map designation from Fifth Rural Residential District, 20 acre minimum Title 10 to community, uh, commercial CC in conformance with the Sage Vista specific plan on 5.9 acres of approximately 317 acre parcel. APN 016 hyphen 021 hyphen 30 PLE PLZ 2024 hyphen 031.
Do you have a second? Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Yeah, we've got. Yeah. Let's, uh, let's take, um, till 10:15. So about eight minutes here, we'll come back at 10:15. Okay, it's 10:15. We're going to reconvene. We are at item 12B. For possible action to approve a request for a conditional use pit from use permit from Refuse Incorporated Waste Management to construct and operate a transfer station on two adjacent parcels totaling 5.34 acres and subject to HI dash S, heavy, one, tough, tough here, HI dash S, heavy industrial suburban zoning generally located south of Almond Drive and west of Orange Lane in Silver Springs. APN 015 dash 261 dash 13 and 015 dash 261 dash 16 PLZ 2024 dash 039. Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lewis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. Uh, so as read into the record with the description, the subject parcels are in Silver Springs. Uh, in this vicinity map, you can see the, the traffic circle of 95A extending north to Fernley and 95A and Highway 50, and then the location of La Haute Reservoir. So the site is east of that traffic circle and north of Highway 50. Uh, zooming into the, the subject parcels, uh, we see Orange Lane. Orange Lane extends south Highway 50 uh, and then connects to Almond Drive. Uh, you can see the two subject parcels whose total area uh, is approximately 5.34 acres. Uh, the proposed development would be on both. uh, is approximately five point three four acres. The proposed development would be on both parcels with access from Almond Drive. Showing some of the existing, uh, conditions and existing development in the site. Uh, we see to the north is, uh, best environmental and oil recycling uh, processing center. To the east across Orange Lane in a vacant parcel, uh, is granite propane. Uh, to the northeast, uh, SSMH storage. I don't know a lot about that business, but uh, they do have storage and dismantling of manufactured homes. Uh, many of them already located on the site. Uh, and then to the southwest of the site, they're circled, um, is a, uh, manufactured home uh, within an area, as we'll see in the land use designations, uh, that are industrial, making that, that residential use not conforming. Uh, the master plan designation for the site includes a suburban character district and industrial designation uh, for the twenty twenty master plan. Uh, the suburban character district, this, this one isn't really typical in the sense that uh, the Lyon County Utility District does not ha- uh, recognize this area within their service boundary. Uh, however, because of some of the existing development and the existence of Orange Lane and Almond Drive, which are non-maintained county roadways. The twenty twenty master plan still solves fit to designate this area suburban. The, uh, the chapter three of the master plan, uh, does describe some of the uses, uh, within the industrial designation. Uh, and some of the language here is copied on the slide, heavy manufacturing, and a wide range of other industrial services and operations, and that will be consistent with what we see in the area in the existing development. Zoning for the site, just as the last item, uh, these images are already run through the matrix, uh, meaning they've been converted to the current and applicable zoning district for, uh, for today's title fifteen development standards. That would be heavy industrial. Uh, again, in the suburban character district, and as we can see, the entire area likewise shares that, that same zoning standard. So notably, Waste Management has a franchise agreement with Lyon County. Uh, as I'm sure you all recall, one of the requirements from that agreement, which was approved in July of twenty twenty three, was that a transfer station be located in Silver Springs? Uh, and that the actual building itself for, for the trash, I'm not sure I'm using the proper term because uh, the representatives are here if you need that term. Um, but the, the requirement is for a Silver Springs transfer station of at least six thousand square feet in size, and that is what's, uh, proposed here of the project. Uh, so I'm here jumping into some images, uh, from the applicant. Again, they've got ample representation here. If you need more granular details about the actual operation, I did add some color uh, to these images to make it a little easier to understand what's happening. Uh, the left side is both parcels. Um, most of the, the development, all the buildings are on the, the southern side. You can see sort of, or the, the, I'm sorry. The green building is the large six thousand square foot transfer station. Um, running through the middle of the site is the parcel split. Uh, staff has included a, a recommended condition of approval that they merge the two parcels. As the, to the northern parcel would have a modular office, the parking, um, and then restrooms. Uh, the southern parcel currently has recycling bins and transfer station. Uh, please note the orientation of the building. Uh, the opening is on the east side, as we know in Silver Springs, that prevailing winds are westerly. Um, so this was done intentionally. There's that building. Um. I, I don't know if there's going to be questions of me or the applicants about the design, but it looks fairly straightforward, uh, from the staff's perspective. Although we did include a required, a recommended condition of approval. Uh, the staff gets, uh, or receives an administrative design review submittal from Waste Management. And at that point, we could really kind of drill down to some of the project specifics, you know, the, the number of parking spaces. Uh, what type of fence would be used, where we'd have fence to secure the perimeter? Uh, maybe add some additional conditions about, about managing trash. Uh, but those, uh, those standards would be in, through the administrative design review, whereas this CUP is really for the actual use. So we didn't want to get down into the, it's the nitty gritty of the development at this stage. Uh, the most notable characteristic and one that, uh, it was the subject of a number of the late backup materials that are included in your packet. I believe there are four letters. Summarize some of those moving forward here in the presentation. Uh, did discuss Orange Lane, uh, the primary access to the property, uh, connecting to Highway fifty. Uh. The county recognized, um, just a year or two ago, and the roads director is here when, when we get to the, to questions about this. Um, that Orange Lane connecting to Highway fifty had been uh, used through private property and wasn't actually within the recognized right of way of Orange Lane, again, a non-maintained county roadway. Uh, so the county applied six inches of compacted type two road base and realigned Orange Lane's connection, Highway fifty, within the public right of way. Uh, roughly represented by the orange line we see here. Uh, the remaining, uh, stretch is, uh, not, was not approved by the county because that's already within the public right of way. So, uh, the recommended conditions of approval include a number of conditions wherein Waste Management is uh, to submit for approval by the roads director, a dust palliative maintenance, uh, schedule for the entire stretch, uh, from Highway fifty to their new operation. Uh, that include Orange Lane and Almond Drive. And, uh, the county would have some ob- some ability in the future where Waste Management to get to a point of two hundred average daily trips. And you see that in some of these. Um. We won't skip ahead yet. Uh, in some of the recommended conditions of approval to require full paving. Uh, that, uh, discussion about how to arrive in that number was deliberated with the applicants at Waste Management and representatives and the roads director. Uh, so staff did make some modifications, uh, the planning commission. So the, the conditions you're seeing here are per those negotiations. And we will keep discussing this topic because I know it's, it's, uh, maybe the, the, the point that brought the most contention into this, into this review. Uh, the findings for a conditional use permit are found in chapter two thirty oh six of Title fifteen. Uh, these are a summary. Of course, the details of each finding are included in the staff report. But the actual use itself, uh, is consistent with the master plan contemplated uses for industrial designations. Uh, staff is still, uh, recommending an administrative designer view. Of course, state approvals would be necessary uh, for a well for a commercials, uh, commercial septic system through NDP. We would still be collecting some middles for building permits. Uh, the fire district would conduct their own independent review. Uh, standards in Title fifteen include, uh, limitations of lighting, of noise, and hours of operation. While those are, are inferred in the conditions recommended for the conditional use permit, they would be further reviewed in more detail at the administrative design review level. Uh, stormwater would have to be designed, uh, in accordance with the county's drainage guidelines. And then, of course, the previously mentioned dust cloud of maintenance schedule to be approved by roads director. So the planning commission and September ten, twenty twenty four did, uh, hear this item, the regularly scheduled meeting, uh, did forward a recommendation unanimously of approval uh, to this board. But after the planning commission meeting, uh, staff did have, uh, multiple conversations with uh, some of the neighboring businesses and residents. And as previously mentioned, there's a number of letters submitted, uh, in this packet pressing their concerns. I just attempted to sort of summarize some of them here, uh, but most notably, they, they are making requests at Orange Lane be paved by wa- waste management, uh, that Lyon County assume maintenance for Orange Lane. And then there are also some concerns stated about the, the use of a transfer station and its location, its proximity to, to, uh, other properties. Uh, I, as a planner, I won't speak on, um, you know, the county's intentions, uh, for Orange Lane. Uh, but I've received no indication that the county is ready to accept for maintenance Orange Lane or or pave it. So, uh, if there are questions about that topic, again, the roads directors here and county managers, that's what this is well. Uh, so I'm, I'm available for questions. The applicant also has representatives and a presentation has more details of the project. Stop this.
Question. One question is for the road. They, they were talking about having a dust palliative maintenance schedule. Can, can you kind of explain that? What a dust palliative maintenance schedule is that for? To keep dust down, I assume, but, uh, what about, uh, maintenance as far as making it passable, no, uh, so we don't tear up cars and stuff because it isn't maintained potholes? That kind of thing? Is that in that schedule?
Yeah, that would be part of the dust palliative maintenance schedule. The dust palliative, depending on, on what you use, um, some, some work better than others. Uh, in, in this area, mag chloride worked really well. The problem with mag chloride in our area, we have such a dry climate that you got to keep some moisture into it to keep it working. So I don't know how many of you have, have been out in the personal lane to the Nevada copper area. They use mag chloride out there. And I mean, there's virtually no dust from any vehicles out there. Makes it real good and hard. Very little maintenance to it, but they do have to run some water on it. They lay a water truck on it. There's other dust pallitives. Some, some I have seen work okay, some not so good. It's, there's all kinds of stuff out there. And as technology comes along, everybody claims that there's the latest and greatest. So, uh, the to, to answer your question, that would be that would be part of it is maintaining that, that dust palliative and, and that, that part of it. Um, I, I just, my, my office is right next door to the transportation here in New York. I see the traffic that get used, which is on one. I mean, a couple of cars a day, maybe. There, there's usually the garbage trucks in and out dumping the garbage and then, and then their trucks that take it to Lockwood, but it's, it's relatively low volume. And I, I know the, the old transfer station in Silver Springs didn't get very much use. We're kind of talking apples and oranges here. That's why we put something in there that if it does start generating a whole lot of traffic, then that's where the paving becomes involved in it. I, I just professionally, I don't see that much traffic initially for the cost to pay both orange and almond to a transfer.
I don't, I don't see that much traffic either in the beginning, but hopefully it becomes something that really works in the community and, and we want traffic to go there, especially with, if you look, drive around Silver Springs, you could see we could fill up that, that place up pretty quick. But I was more concerned about potholes and stuff like that, tearing up vehicles, those kind of things. Is it going to be on a regular? Is that part of the schedule to make sure that the community can always access it smoothly? You know, dirt roads tear up real quick. So that's, that was my concern.
And I know there's been complaints from some of the surrounding businesses and a couple residents. I don't believe it's fair to put that burden on Waste Management when there's a lot of other commercial properties out there that are wanting them to pave the road for. But that just that doesn't seem right. If, if they want to to chip in and, and help pay it, then it's a completely different story. That's why we did put the condition on it's for seeing that two hundred eighty, then, then it needs to be.
Oh, they picked a non-maintained county road.
Yeah.
So.
And we did, it was two thousand twenty two that we realigned Orange, Orange Street from Highway fifty, just right past Granite Propane's driveway entrance because it was the existing road was on the private parcels to the west. So we realigned it where it was in the right way. Because we did get some complaints from a couple of those property owners that our road was through a property. It wasn't in the right way. And I mean, that, that cost just to do that, this is our, our time and labor and, uh, all of the, the base, we had to put a covert in there at Highway fifty. Uh, and some engineering to have to make sure that we were getting the road put in the right location. We, we were into it for eighty six thousand dollars. Just realigning that stretch.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Anything further? Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is actually from Mr. Carriola.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Before Mr. Holman said.
I want you to make a complete go.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for letting me jump in. Um, I appreciate what you said about shouldn't probably fall all on Waste Management back to to, uh, pave this. Um. I just want to say that as a board member, I think we finally held s- our feet to the fire, our feet to the fire in getting this done. So I want to thank our, our, uh, Board of County Commissioners for doing what our job was, is to, to do that. Um. And then as far as mag chloride goes, I love the Nevada great outdoors. I've been on a ton of roads that have this, i.e. the mines, especially in northern Nevada, and the majority of the year, a lot of the year, it's great stuff. But there are wet times where it does put a nice undercoat on your rig and it is tough to get off. So I don't, I don't know. Um. I don't, I don't know that the solution is necessarily mag chloride because people, it does provide a nice undercoat that you've got to hit the car wash right away or, or it sets. But, but, uh, I am all for this, and I think, uh, um, I appreciate the fact that we're getting this, looks like we might be moving and getting this done and operational for the, for the people on Central Lions. So good job.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, Mr. Carriola. Can we put the findings or the, um, conditions back up? Have a one. Do we, do we?
Finding.
That's, oh, that's just a highlight. Okay, okay. I'll, I'll just do without that. So anyway, my, my, this is really just a comment and wordsmithing because I can't help myself. You know, it's a bad disease, but on, um, condition twelve. Okay. That's why I believe it was a condition. It's not the findings, but it's okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, a condition twelve. I just think it would read better if at the end of the second line where it says trip count is assessed or paving is required to put a period there and remove the word because and just state that Almond Drive and Orange Lane are not county maintained roadways.
I don't think substantively it makes any difference for, for staff. So I would.
Yeah, because it, the, the word because is just superfluous.
Sure.
That was all. Thank you.
So just eliminate the rest of the sentence.
Well, no, no, put, put a, put a period after the word required.
Oh, gotcha.
And then just remove the word because.
Gotcha.
So then you're, then you're just making a factual statement that Almond Drive and Orange Lanes are not county, county maintained roadways.
Yes, sir. And instead of associating the two topics.
That was all.
Well, anything else, Commissioner Hendrick?
I did have one comment. I, uh, saw, watched this present, presentation at the advisory board meeting. And Chief Harvey was there, and he did have some concerns about the traffic flow configuration there. So I just want to make sure that he is consulted in the design review because he may want to see something a little different.
Certainly, uh, we do send, uh, administrative design reviews out to, uh, reviewing entities like, like the fire district.
Anything from?
We do have the applicants who do have a presentation as well. So.
Um. You need a presentation on this from the applicants or any questions?
I'm sure there'd be.
Oh, we should make kind of a talk.
I mean, it's, it's up to the commissioners. You want me, what would you like further?
I watched it on the planning commission, so.
Yeah, same thing. Alright. You need it? Okay, so really no further questions on that. So, uh, any a public input? Any, any hands up or anybody in?
hands up or anybody in here? So if that's the case, and there's no further questions from commissioners of the public, then I'm looking for a motion.
I move that based on findings A through G and subject to conditions one through eight, that the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners approve the request for a conditional use permit from Refuse Incorporated Waste Management to construct and operate a transfer station on two adjacent parcels totaling five point three four acres and subject to H I dash S, heavy industrial suburban zoning generally located south of Almond Drive and west of Orange Lane in Silver Springs, APNs zero one five two six one thirteen and zero one five two six one sixteen.
Sure.
Oh, with the conditions amended as stated.
I, I heard you say conditions one through eight. You say one through eight.
One through eighteen. Yeah.
One through eighteen.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. Thank you for being here. We've had a request, um, from the Smith Valley Rotary, uh, to be moved up. So I'm going to move sixteen A up to our next item. And thirteen's already been pulled from the, the agenda, so get sixteen A out of the way and then we can move on to the county. On sixteen A, we have for possible action, except the donation from the Smith Valley Rotary for a plaque at the Smith Valley Community Arena.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having me. Um, my name is Claudia Galula. I am the president of the Rotary Club of Smith Valley. May I approach the bench, please? I have some pamphlets to open up. Because for me.
Thank you.
I talk louder than words, so might be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. And so, um, what you see in front of you is what we have done. And it started June twenty eighth last year. The first page you are looking at will be the rodeo arena, completed soil repair. In the blue arrow, you will see where that area was that we were supposed to start working with. If you change your page number two, you will see the removed loose sand on the east side of the arena. And that will be where the area was marked. Page three, excavating and removing loose sand areas. We were supposed to just tackle one little area, but as we were digging, we found more loose soil. So if you go to page four, you can see the depth and also the measurements. How the loose sand was in that area. Page number five, you will see remove loose sand to a depth of almost two feet. Page six, placing clay soil and excavating area. You also see, um, a lot of the, uh, volunteers within the area of the Smith Valley. Page number seven, moisture-conditioned clay soil placed in the excavating area. Page number eight, compacting the moisture-conditioned clay soil by wheel rolling with water truck. Page number nine, laser leveling. Compacted the clay soil. So we can get a better, uh, footing. Page ten, finish, subgrade surface of compacted clay soil. You will see how that difference was after all that was done. Page eleven, placing five inches thick salty sand enhanced animal footing soil. Those dump trucks that came and helped us all to acquire five inches of that soil for all the animals and riders to have a safe area. Page twelve, spreading and lasering leveling five inches of thick salty sand enhanced annual footing soil. Again, you have workers, volunteers. Page thirteen, you will have a much better picture of the finished great arena surface is ready for rodeo use. So the topic today in my visit to all of you, uh, is page number fourteen. The approval of this plaque that we were want to, um, place on the arena area. And if you may approach your bench again once more, I presented a letter for all of you.
Thank you.
Yes. And so what we requesting in that letter and I'll read it just for, um, record purposes. Attention to the Lyon County Border Commissioners. Our C S V Rotary Club of Smith Valley have the opportunity to present the thank you plaque, which is in your pocket in the last, last page. To the park board members on September ninth at a board meeting. Item was approved by majority of board members. This plaque is an honor to volunteer who with their donated time, efforts, equipment, product, fuel, tools, machinery, and most importantly, with of hard work, among rotarians accomplish an outstanding community project. Since the inception of the club and among newer members, this momentum of keeping the park for all has become a stream to each and everyone. Taking in consideration the gift the land donated with the intention to establish a recreational area, recreational area, excuse me. Rotary Club of Smith Valley has had an immense collaboration, not only with physical labor, donations, but most importantly, with decision-making. As of today's date, in having the park incorporated to the Lyon County Park and Recreation, we rotarians continue to help, donate, work and contribute to, not without communicating all endeavors to park board representatives. For Rotary Club of Smith Valley as well as community members, it is an honor to validate the volunteerism of many. This contribution to the arena area depicts once more who we are, what we can do and how far we can go if we can only get together. Your acceptance and approval not only will enhance the history of the land, parentheses, park, but made by many. Moreover, it marks a time where you, the Lyon County Board of Commissioners, brings a community together for the things that we can accomplish for all. The plaque is made out of bronze and is eighteen by eighteen. We have it right here and is approximately fifty pounds. All this, this project was calculated, was recorded day by day, the days, the hours and whom participated for record purposes. The project was done to be protected and be probably kept for five to 10 years. And within that timeframe, maybe in 10 years can be resurfaced again. So that was one of our aim, you know. Decisions that we were trying to accomplish. It is very heavy. So park board representatives have every single detail since day one until this last item that we're trying to present to you guys today. So with your approval, we can, you know, place it up depending on where will be the best ideal area away from hazardous areas for kids or any visitors in the park, but protected from, you know, many years and, and many visitors. And I have some pictures if, I don't know if she did a lot of, okay.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Keller.
Yes.
Remote, uh, is there?
It was requested that we removed it.
Okay.
Yes.
It's the chairman. Chairman of the park.
With the Rotary Club of Smith Valley thought that by gifting this plaque to the park and recognizing in honor of his name because of the years of volunteerism, um, it will be a nice thing, but he rejected that. So we were, you know, um, faced with removing his name on. Yes.
Uh, no, thank you. Um, and thank all your volunteers. That was quite an undertaking. Um, and, uh, rodeo is a big part of Nevada and I know a big, there's a lot of cowboys and cowgirls down there in Smith Valley and I hope they get a ton of use out of it. And it makes for a fast, fun, safe surface for those horses and, and the cowboys and cowgirls. So well done and, and thank you so very much. It's awesome.
Will be a rodeo and the rodeo group are so extremely happy to have that done because it's safer for everyone. So, yeah, and we pride off.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Thank you for all, all the work you did. That looks beautiful out there. It really does. And, and like Commissioner Jacobson said, let's get a place for kids to be doing something productive. But I did have one question. You said that you were going to look for the appropriate location for the plaque. I presume that you are going to coordinate with our facilities director to, to cite the look, to pick the location.
Will that be?
Mr. Homestead.
Yeah.
So I had never met Mr. Homestead. Thank you for and absolutely whatever that might be and just guide me to the direction that I need to go and now we'll, we'll get it done.
Thank you.
Yes. And so you guys know with all these, uh, community members and companies and business earners, we accomplished to probably pour into that arena fifty-three thousand dollars just to that own donations alone. So we are proud as a group to be able to do something like that for the community. Any other questions?
No, it's a huge undertaking and looks like you did a great job. Really appreciate it.
And absolutely the safety issue that we had with the arena. I'm glad that we were able to bring that up to, uh, a safe standard. I know there's more work to be done and this is a fantastic project, project that was accomplished in twenty twenty-four. So def- definitely appreciate all the work out there and, uh, guess we'll see fun days on Sundays.
Yes, see you guys there if you may.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks for having me.
You bet. All right. So I'm looking for a motion on sixteen.
Chair, would you like to?
Oh, public input. Okay. I didn't see anything here, so. Need to say it though. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Any input?
Mr. Hockaday, you want to make a motion on this one?
I will certainly make a motion on this that, uh, we accept the donation from the Smith Valley Rotary for a plaque at the Smith Valley Community Arena. Have a second.
Second.
Okay. We have, uh, motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you for coming in for a presentation.
Thank you very, very much.
Have a safe trip back. Remember three thirty-nine's closed. And we're going to move to item fourteen, county manager. And several items here on the agenda. Fourteen A for possible action, approve upgrading the emergency slash communications manager position to an emergency management and government affairs position and to create a program analyst position along with an additional vehicle, services and supplies, all to be furnished from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency in the amount of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand forty-two dollars are to provide direction to the county manager on the process for selecting lobbyists for the twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty twenty-five legislative session. Go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Um, yeah, so the, as you remember, the board provided direction to me to take a look at options to um, bring a lobbyist in-house and hire somebody on staff. Took a look at a bunch of different options and how we ended up here was, uh, Ms. Allison was not at the meeting where we discussed that. So I called her up and said that she, uh, drew the short straw on that. Of course, I was joking, but then she said, well, actually I do have an interest. Um, and so I said, okay, let's, let's talk that through and figure out what that would look like. And so, um, essentially, um, what the proposal would be was, would be to upgrade her position. Uh, currently she is a P three, classified as a P three. This would, uh, upgrade it to a D two, right? And then it would hire an analyst position, um, that could support her, um, both on the emergency management side and on the lobbyists. So essentially, um, you know, again, we, we took a look at a bunch of different things. I mean, the other option would be to hire a completely separate position. However, during session, that really is, uh, it, it takes more than, than one person. There's quite a bit of work that goes into preparing the, the different reports on the different bills and and so, um, you know, if you were to hire just that, that position as a standalone, you would also have, still have to hire somebody at least part-time for that. Whereas with this, we can kind of combine the two, get, uh, um, some support on the emergency management side so that that way when Ms. Taylor is at, um, the legislature and something happens, which there's stuff that goes on around the county all the time, um, that person can respond to it. Um, that is why there's a vehicle in this as well. And it has to be something that has four-wheel drive and can, can tow a trailer in case of, uh, an emergency. Um, there, I don't know if the board's familiar, but when we do have to stand up a shelter or something, we have trailers, uh, um, that get moved around the county as a part of that. And so we really kind of have to have that capability. Um, is also included would be, um, supplies, office equipment, software is a big one. We would need a bill tracking software above and beyond what Melis can do. Um, and so there's quite a bit too. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We're proposing that the analyst position be the P one. That range is from sixty, sixty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four to ninety-five thousand four hundred and ninety-six, the budget that was included in your packet. Assume is kind of the middle range there. So that's where we're at with. And I do want to throw out there, you know, so we, uh, previously had talked to a few different lobbyists a couple of years ago about, um, representation. We estimate that that option, you know, if, if, but we were to go to an outside lobbyist that, that you're looking at between so, somewhere between sixty and seventy-two thousand dollars for a state lobbyist, so.
Let's start at the other end, Commissioner Hendricks. Anything that you?
I, it, it just seems that instead of combining it to one position now, we're creating another position too. So it's kind of not really what I expected. Does she not already have a truck and trailer or emergency management?
We, we sure do, but she's, she would need that as well for, she's still going to be traveling to legislature and other things. So we would still need both.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me, let me start out by saying I kind of like this, okay? But I'm having a hard time getting my head around what is the program analyst going to be doing when they're not in session?
So there's quite a bit that goes on in the emergency management world and, and maybe I can let Ms. Allison speak to that. Now, um, there's a lot of grants, there's a lot of paperwork and stuff. So she's still getting caught up on paperwork from the floods from last year. So, um, with that, I'll just kind of turn that over to Ms. Allison if she can kind of talk about what, what the vision is.
Director Taylor Allison, Lyon County Emergency Manager. So on the day today, we have what I call blue sky days and then storm days. Um, we manage several plans. So we're like county manager mentioned, getting caught up on plans that are incredibly outdated. Um, but that also includes supporting our other departments with, you know, utility vulnerability assessments and, and risk plans that are required annually. So there are administrative tasks, um, that this position would be supporting with as well as managing the grants. So FEMA grants that come our way, um, looking to pursue other opportunities to help benefit the county um, as, and the LEPCE. So helping assist with the LEPCE grants and getting those out to uh, the fire districts and the law.
So this new position will be under the, the urgency management department and under Mr. Allison. Right, that's all I have thinking.
An acronym, LEPCE.
Bookworm Emergency Clinic.
Since I'm on it, I just want to make sure. Understand when we get to those acronyms, it's good for people to understand what we're talking about. Go ahead, Commissioner Keller.
Well, I'm, I'm, I really like this. I really, to me, this ma, this makes a lot of sense. I know for a fact, if you try to go to Nellis and do everything like that, I can understand the software. Uh, my wife was a
My wife was a registered lobbyist last go around and it was just a nightmare to do that. We are moving. If you've noticed some of the bills that have gone through, they're trying to change their legislation to have it every year or go full-time. And if you know what's happening down there right now, there are inside, they are in meetings constantly right now. So input is important and knowledge of all of them is not an easy, easy task. So there is always something to do as far as the lobbyist is concerned and it will protect us. I know that like the, on the capital overlay, that's a one-time thing. So I know it looks like a big price tag to get started, but I think in the long term, we're going to set ourselves up for the future. And so I'm, I'm really happy with this.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, could I get Mr. Foley to come on down if he's not?
He just wanted another look at that fine-looking KC tie.
I'm a Twins fan. So budget-wise, Mr. Foley, where do we, how are we looking if we do this? Call it an upgrade to to our services that we have with, with the legislature and, and with the vehicle and all that other.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, direct answer to that is if that were allocated out of contingency, which is a recommendation at this point, that would drop your contingency down to approximately ninety thousand dollars available. And then we have the district court request for additional position. If that were approved, that would take you down to having allocated all the contingency.
And when does that fiscal year end?
I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just answering.
No.
You know, and I do want to point out, so we, we did look at the other option of hiring somebody specific for this, but given the fact that you would still need a second person, we actually think that this would be the most cost-effective way to move out this.
Commissioner.
If we were to hire an intern.
If I could address that. Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, more than likely lobbyist would be close to a D one pay range, which would be with benefits, essentially what the cost of those salary and benefits for the two positions are currently. And that wouldn't include the second position. So when this came up, it seemed to be the most cost efficient for an internal position. Of course, an external position would be, if we hired a lobbyist, it would probably be somewhere between forty and fifty thousand over and above what would be budgeted currently. The contingency figure is slightly misleading because I always like to give the board an annualized figure. But the reality is we're partway through the fiscal year, so we would actually be able to get by with a little less. And it'd be the skinnier teeth left on contingency after.
And then, if I may, I've, and forgive my ignorance, so I'll be the guinea pig on this one, but so when we have a lobbyist and we go after funds, is there any way to in our requests include of, so let's say we're going after two million dollars for a road, road project. And we're going after those funds or we're lobbying for those funds. Is there a way to write into that cost of lobbyist into that? Or is that not?
So on the, it's, we're not allowed to for federal grants, also lobbying in there in any way, shape or form. The majority of the duties of this, if she's writing grants, sometimes you can put grant writer duties in there and possibly take a look at that, depending on the grant. The majority of the work for this is lobbying the legislature so that we don't end up with a five million dollar bill at the end of it. Not necessarily the grants.
So it was a stupid question. I was a guinea pig that asked it.
It's a good question. I wish the lobbyist, we could include that in some of the costs that we give reverse. This particular lobbyist, federal lobbyist, we, we get more money back than we put into it. So that's, that's more than made for itself. This particular one, I'm sure we coordinate with that and do some work with that, but the lion's share of the focus would be.
But basically a lobbyist for the county is looking at trying to keep away from unfunded mandates from the state legislature. So in the long run, if it saved us two hundred thousand dollars and in some bill that's going to make us pay two thou, or two hundred thousand, then yeah, so it's a, it's a gamble, gambling game.
Or as, as things come in, we're expecting, we're trying to get growth anyway. And sometimes those bills restrict how that, how we're going to get money. So we have to do stuff, you know, get, get our, our way right in there. So.
So if we just went out and hired a lobbyist, if they do change to where they have session every year or have session all the time, the cost for that would be a whole lot more than what we were considering anyway. I would imagine so. At least this way, if they did change to that, we're covered.
I, I don't know if that's accurate, because we pay our lobbyists monthly anyway. So I, we'd have to do an analysis on that. I don't know. And it would depend on.
Comment on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, we pay lobbyists regardless, but if they were in session more than four months, every two years, I guarantee that cost would double or triple.
Yeah, and I, I would. Okay, we just don't know what that looks like. So I don't want to make that.
Right. But I do, I do have a, a comment about the contingency for one thing. Because these, these ten sheriff's vehicles that are on here for seven hundred thousand dollars were approved in the last little year, but the vehicles weren't delivered. What are the chances of them all ten being delivered this year?
I would say a hundred percent.
That's too bad.
Because we've already received some of them. The others are on their way. We've actually ordered as of as of yesterday, I think we've ordered five of the ones in this year's budget as well, and we'll have received all of them by the next.
You know, I was just, I just hope there'd be some carryover because I, I mean, this is very early in the budget year to be that low on contingency. However, I think this is something that we need to do. And as you know, we, we said when we were talking about entered into a contract with the Porter Group for representation back in DC. The local lobbyists that we have here for Nevada Legislature is an expense. The lobbyists we have in DC is an investment and got a pretty good ROI so far. So that's, that's just a point. I mean, I, I, I think this is something that we definitely need to do. And I think Ms. Allison is very capable. I'm become her representing us in the legislative building. Why you want to do it, I don't know. And I'm speaking from personal experience.
And, and just as a reminder, ROI, return on investment. So let's make sure everybody's good on that one too. Anything further? All right then, I guess we'll move on here for possible action. Any public input on this? Seeing none from anywhere, then I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approve upgrading the emergency slash communications manager position to an emergency management and government affairs position and to create a program analyst position along with an additional vehicle, services and supplies, all to be funded from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand forty-two dollars and to, well, that's it. That's my motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, fourteen B.
I just wanted to come up and thank you all for considering this option. I do see government affairs as closely aligning with emergency management in the sense that it's about having relationships with the folks that matter that you can call in the eleventh hour and say, hey, this doesn't work for Lyon County. And so I look forward to having those discussions and, and strengthening those relationships up there again.
Thank you. Right, we'll move on to fourteen B for possible action. Propose an ordinance amending Lyon County Code, Title fifteen, the Lyon County Land Use and Development Code, chapters fifteen point three two zero, section three, table fifteen point three two zero dash one. Chapter fifteen point three two zero, section one in chapter fifteen, fifteen point twelve hundred, section four to define and allow the private use airfields and general aviation airport, airports and other matters properly related thereto.
Just one moment, we'll get the presentation up. So you, you may remember this is an ordinance that, well, some of you may remember. I don't think some of you were not on the board at the time, but have probably seen it. We had originally brought an ordinance forward, I think like three years ago, two, two or three years ago regarding airports and airstrips. And the board at that time requested some changes to that ordinance based on public feedback, mostly dealing with the zoning districts that airports were allowed in. And so we have reworked that ordinance. And I apologize that it has taken so long to, to get here. Commissioner Henderson was the one that had originally requested this.
Twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, a long time ago. So the reason I'm doing the presentation and not the community development directors, because this is a project that I started when I was here. And so I offered to see it through. So anyway. So Title ten, previously allowed for airports and airstrips or in general aviation airports, I should say, but they were subject to a conditional use permit. When Title fifteen was adopted, it was left out. I think that was unintentional, but it was not allowed as a use in Title fifteen, which does make airports the, the development of new airports illegal and puts the existing airports in the classification of legally existing non-conformers. And so this ordinance is really just to fix that. So the proposed ordinance defines both private use airstrips and general aviation airports. And it modifies land use tables as, so for private airstrips, they would be allowed in the RR twenty, RR ten, the agricultural, non-irrigated agricultural resource land, public land and tourist commercial rural, all subject to a conditional use permit. And that pretty much reflects the current airstrips that are out there. There's actually quite a few within the county. So very remote. And defines where those, those could be. And then it modifies the land use table to allow general aviation airports, which are airports that are open to the public to be allowed in light industrial rural, light industrial suburban, heavy industrial rural, heavy industrial suburban and public facilities zoning districts. Again, subject to a condition. Hit them all buttons. We also added, this ordinance would also add definitions to chapter twelve hundred, which would define what a private use airfield is, which are civilian airfields under private ownership for private use only. Private use airfields meet the following criteria. They're designated by the Nevada Department of Transportation Airport Helport System Plan as having either an access or backcountry role. And then this modifies the, that or adds a definition, I should say, not modifies. The definition for general aviation airports, which are civilian airports that do not serve scheduled passenger service and are typically known as general aviation airports, general aviation airports usually serve private aircraft and small aircraft charter operations. General aviation airports meet the following criteria. They're designated by the Department of Transportation, Nevada Department of Transportation Airport and Helport System Plan as having a general. With that, I'm, if there are any questions, because this is the first time coming forward, it would be to propose.
Okay. Any question?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you. This, this is something that we definitely need to have in our code because we have airports in Lyon County. So.
I had a question on private land strips. Is the, is the cone of influence different than with a general aviation?
I don't believe so. I think those are laid out in our, our master plan as well. I, I believe it's similar, but they may have different requirements depending on the size of the airstrip. You know, that, those are all kind of defined individually.
I was just curious if, if they were different.
Yeah. So the length of the runway, I mean, there's a, there's a number of different factors that go into that.
With Commissioner Keller's question, any private land strips or grandfathered in on any of this? Or where are we at with some of that?
Yeah. So as I mentioned before, currently they would be considered legally existing non-conforming because we don't have them as an allowable use. This would just make them legally exist and get rid of the non-conforming designation.
Anything further? Any other input? Seeing nothing, then I guess we just propose this.
Mr. Chair, I would like to propose an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title fifteen, the Lyon County Land Use and Development Code, chapters fifteen dot three two zero, section three, table fifteen dot three two zero dash one. Chapter fifteen dot three two zero, section three, table fifteen dot three two zero dash four. Chapter fifteen dot three two zero, section three, table fifteen dot three two zero dash five. Chapter fifteen dot three three six, section three, table fifteen dot three three six dash one. And chapter fifteen point one two zero, hypo in here. Fifteen dot one two zero, section four, to define and allow for private use airfields and generally aviation airports and other matters properly related thereto. I never got to say that before.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, anyone?
No second.
Oh, that's right. Just a proposal. Yep, we've got it. So proposal's made. Ready for the next one? All right. For possible action, propose an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title fifteen, the Lyon County Land Use and Development Code to adopt airport influence areas and other matters properly related thereto.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So we actually never got to hear this ordinance the last time because the first ordinance had gotten pulled and if you don't have airports, you don't have airport influence areas. This one is kind of new. So this one was again requested by Commissioner Henderson. It adds language to Title fifteen regarding development within airport influence areas as designated by the twenty twenty master plan. The ordinance aims to alert developers that new construction or alteration of existing developments will be required to review the proposed building height and determine whether the filing of an FAA form seventy-four sixty dash one is required with the FAA to identify potential navigation hazards on properties within the airport influence areas as designated in that twenty twenty. So this is an example of the, of an airport influence area, which is what Commissioner Jacobson was asking about on the last on, on the last item. So this is the Silver Springs Airport shows, shows that airport. There is a similar map in our master plan for each airport. So what this ordinance does and the changes that it makes, it changes fifteen to twelve oh one. And it says airport influence areas designated within the countywide components of master plan are intended to promote land use compatibility. The designation recognizes the benefits and potential adverse impacts that may occur within certain distances from general aviation facilities and provides a framework to minimize these impacts as well as to protect the safety and efficiency of aircraft operations. B says the purpose is to identify when construction of new development or alteration of existing development requires identification of potential navigation hazards on properties located within airport influence areas as identified in the master plan. It also adds some, some clarifying language on structure, height limitation. So currently, each zoning district has Height limitation. So currently each zoning district has a maximum height that. A building can be. Now, through a conditional use permit process that that can be increased. However, this does set that maximum at the maximum for that zoning district. And. It also says that essentially that if any building height is to be over thirty five feet, then they would have to. Process a form seventy four sixty dash one through the FAA, which is already something that is required from developers. So really, this is adding it to our code so that. It's very quick. That, that being answered, any questions?
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank, thank you, Mister Chair, and again, Mister Haskin, thank you. I think the most important part of this ordinance. Is the second height with the structure height limitations and the requirement to comply with FAA requirements. Because that has caused us some problems in the past before for you to even here. We we had. Some conflicts at one of our airports and and this this will help alleviate that. So thank you very much.
Public input. Nothing. Let you do it again.
Yes, Mister Chair, I propose an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title fifteen, the Lyon County Lands Use and Development Code. To adopt airport influence areas and other matters properly related thereto.
That was Commissioner Henderson. Anything further then, sir? If not, we'll move on to fifteen. Comptroller for possible action award the bid for the Sengatsepe conductor and pole replacement project to the sole bidder. Wasatch Electric and approve a contract for the work in the amount of seventy eight thousand four hundred dollars and declare the copper wire to be surplus after it is removed.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Council, for the record, this was in the budget for the current year for eighty thousand dollars. So it's within the budget. We received a single bidder for this. We received. Interest from three bidders, but two of the bidders upon. As they came out and evaluated the project and found out that Wasatch was also bidding on it declined because they said there's no way we're going to be able to match their price. So. Wasatch is the lowest responsive bidder and the only responsive bidder at this point. My recommendation to the board is that we have the budget, so I would ask to.
Any questions? Question, Commissioner Jacobson?
I just throw on a dart in the dark. Does envy energy ever do? Projects for communities like if we were to. Put in a request, a utilize equipment or whatever on something like this. Do they ever do anything? Do they have any? Grants or budgets that they reach out and help counties with?
Not that I remember.
All right.
I wish they did.
Yeah, so do I.
Any public input? Seeing none, I'll go for a motion on fifteen A. I move to award the bid for the Sengatsepe. Conductor and pole replacement project to the sole bidder. Wasatch Electric and approve a contract for the work in the amount of seventy eight thousand four hundred dollars and declare the copper wire to be surplus after it is removed. Second anywhere?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Sixteen A is complete already. Seventeen seventeen A for presentation only. Presentation of Lyon County Human Services Grant Process.
And it'll just look nicer. There we go. Hello again, Dr. Sheila Holmes, Director of Lyon County Human Services for the record. This morning, I wanted to do a presentation for you on our grant process at Lyon County Human Services and. Be able to align our. Be able to align our strategy with your board direction so that way we can be on the same page going forward. So first I wanted to start with a quick overview in regards to the current grants that we have. I'm not going to go through all of these items, but. It's really to show you how volatile the grant arena can be. Over the years, we lose some and we gain some almost every year. We didn't really take on, and so this graph doesn't show staff. It shows the number of grants and the dollar amounts over the years, and you can see that it's really not a significant increase, particularly when you consider. The cost of items that have gone up since twenty seventeen. Where the cost of staffing goes up seven point five percent some years, right? Five percent for the cola, two point five for the staff. I do provide during our annual budget graphs that show the number of staff. So I can highlight for you that in twenty eighteen nineteen. We took over the Yarrington Senior Center from a defunct nonprofit. That was a major increase to our staff by. Five staff members. We haven't added staff since the creation of our Behavior Health Division, which has been staff of two. And that was within this last year utilizing opioid funds, which increases our capacity and our ability to bring in additional dollars via Medicaid. So we haven't increased staffing. We haven't increased. Programs, but we have had to increase the number of grants to be able to maintain those staffs. So in some of these years, we've actually lost staff because we've lost grants. So we've lost staff through attrition and then. Sought to increase grants to bring those staff positions back. One key example in. Which one is it? Twenty nineteen, well, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty to twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. ADSD changed their way that they do their grants. That's the Aging and Disability Services Division of Nevada. They previously for their social services grants had one grant application. And we were able to get our Nevada Care Connection at a time known as the Aging Disability Resource Center and our case management. Through that one grant, and it was a large grant, and we were able to employ all of the folks we needed to do that across the four main communities of the county. In that year from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty one, the state changed the way they did that, and they split that one grant application out into six or seven different service categories. And then significantly reduced the amount of money we were receiving because we wrote for the one. Right? So then we had to adjust what we did going forward because because the significant we do start funding, we had to lose a position through attrition. So we went down from having multiple people being able to do that and one case manager for the county, only one person able to do a variety of those different things for our older adults. For the entire county. It's not enough. So we went out and we found Fund Healthy Nevada Funding, started writing for the additional grants. Offered through ADSD. So we went from one to now having four grants to serve. Four communities and have two full-time case managers. All of that to say, what we have to do is braid our funding streams. We have to find grants that fit the current services needed in the community. And then we braid those funding streams together to equal full-time case managers. Because we don't get the eighty thousand from one grant for one full-time case manager and eighty thousand from another grant or a hundred and sixty to have the two. That would be great. But that's not the grant arena of which we have to work in right now. And having this conversation with Mister Foley yesterday, he had an excellent recommendation, which is potential future action from you guys as the Board of County Commissioners to write a letter to the state and the governor. Requesting that the state reconsider their grant operations into. Making bigger grants instead of smaller ones pieced out that would reduce administrative burden both for the state and for smaller communities and counties such as ourselves. Which would allow us to be more effective and have far less grants and far less administrative work to manage those grants. However, in the meantime, this is what we do to be able to provide the same level of services that we've always provided. From Lyon County Human Services with the exception of Behavior Health. It's the only new new expansion we've done in many years, except for bringing on the Yarrington Senior Center. So I wanted to give you guys that high level overview in regards to how the grants operate for us and why we continue to seek out diversifying funding streams because they go up and down. And as we lose some, we need to go find what's replaced it in the arena to maintain the level of service for our community. So with that, we have what we call, I'm going to walk you guys through our grant process so you can better understand what we do, why we make the decisions we make. And what that looks like for us from a grant management perspective. So we have the pre-award phase. What this looks like is we're continuously receiving requests from the community for us to offer different services. We hear requests from. Different community organizations. We hear requests from direct constituents. We hear requests from all over the place and then additionally my staff. Sheila, it would be great if we could offer this. My clients are really needing it. So what we do, as these. Opportunities and things arise, we do have what we call an emerging needs process. Where we meet as a management team, we create logic models and we walk through what. Different programming that's being requested would look like, what the cost would be and create logic models for in the future if grant funding becomes available, if it's something we'd be able to implement. Or if this is something that would be better implemented by a nonprofit community partner. We don't have many of them in Lyon County, but we have a few and we are able to influence and encourage them to go after grants, aid them in those. Processes, provide our logic models, give them the data we have available for them to be able to provide some of these services as well. So we don't always consider ourselves first, but who can do it in the community? We also have our strategic plan and community needs assessment. We do this every five years. Well, our community needs every five years is a big one that we hire a contractor for. We have to do one every three years intermittently, which is just done through my program analyst and my division management staff. But we have our strategic plan that helps us identify our long-term goals to meet community gaps and needs. And then we also participate in several different partnerships with different agencies throughout the state. So locally, we have our Public and Behavior Health Task Force and our Health and Wellness Hub. Where we meet with school district partners, local nonprofits, other private entities that are in the same arena. Where we discuss issues and needs regularly. So we're aware of what's happening locally, who's doing what, and if there's any gaps there. We also have regional requirements, so we do have to participate in the Rural Nevada Continuum of Care due to our emergency shelter grant funding. We do have to participate in the Nevada Community Action Association because of our community services block grant funding. There's also the Northern Regional Behavior Health Policy Board, the Quad County Healthcare Coalition, and other. Statewide initiatives that take place that we have a voice in. And we get that data from the state, our local and regional partners. So we're aware of what the gaps are, what funding streams are coming in. And how we're able to pivot shift or not engage at all, depending on the needs of our local community. All of that to say, that information is what funnels into. How we select funding opportunities and if we choose to go after them or not. Effective grants stem from genuine community needs, fostering services that respond directly to what is necessary rather than what is fundable. There are grants that come across every year that we say no to because it's not identified as a significant need for our community. We don't have the capacity to do it, or the grant is unwieldy and it would tank us, right? Certain grants come with different management requirements and some of them we can do easily and some of them we cannot. And so all of those factors are considered. I have the final say within our department. I do say no to our division managers pretty regularly when they come forward with. This is a grant opportunity available and I really want to write for this, but we review it, we weigh it with all of those components. I have a candid conversation with them and then we decide whether or not we're going to move forward with writing it or whether we're going to say we can't do that right now. Sometimes we're able to offer that opportunity to a nonprofit or a private entity and say, this might be something that's up your alley. Maybe they take it, maybe they don't. So we find the funding that fits for what we need. Typically, when we're losing grants, we go out on the hunt actively searching for grants that will fit what we're currently trying to fill. But other than that, it's a really passive process where we're just a part of listservs. We're aware of these different agency or these different collectives where they talk about different grants coming up. We have great partnerships with our state partners. So a lot of times when we have grants through specific state agencies and they know different ones are coming up, they'll reach out to me and say, hey, take it with this. This is what we're getting ready to do. I do get to be a part of a lot of the planning processes for some of those things. So sometimes our local voice is able to be heard while drafting the notice of funding opportunity. But all of that to say. We only find funding that fits with our mission and fits with the issues that have been identified through the strategic plan and community needs assessment. So after we find funding that fits, we prepare grant proposals. This also happens for our regular reoccurring grants as those come out, the ones that. Provide the core services to our existing programs. We go through this preparing the grant proposal. We do this as a collaborative approach at human services. We meet as a team, discuss the NOFO, the Notice of Funding Opportunity, all of the requirements within that and to be it out. So administrative services takes on the budget, the program of which it's going to nest under. The division manager takes over writing both the narrative. The analyst and myself work on other components or things that are addressed as far as the department goes, the technical components of the application, and then the final review and edits. I think I just hit on these different components of the application. And then we submit it. We have a final review process. We go through, we do an internal review and every, almost every grant comes with a. Review grid as to how they're going to score it. So we do that in-house prior to submitting it to make sure that our application is going to, from our perspective, rank high, that we've met all of the requirements based off of their scoring grid. It helps ensure that. All of this time and effort going into this point is most likely going to be fruitful on the the backend. And then you wait, and sometimes you wait for a really long time. And sometimes you wait and they tell you they're going to fund you and then you wait longer until they actually give you the funds. It is a waiting game. Sometimes you hear back that you did not receive funding. Sometimes you don't. We have a pretty high success rate because we are very selective on what we write for. And then we have the awards process. That's where we go back and forth, and this is part of where after the waiting and they say we're going to fund you. Sometimes they're going to fund you for everything you wrote for. Occasionally they want to give you more and sometimes they want to give you less. So we have to go back and forth and modify our scope of work, modify our budget, make sure all of the pennies add up. And then they issue that final notice of sub award, at which point in time we bring that to you guys. And that's when you guys get it on your agenda in front of you to accept the award or deny the award at that point in time. The Notice of Sub Award is a pretty critical document. It's what we agree to as far as the budget and the scope of work when I was showing you guys our quarterly report this morning. That has the outcomes that we. Promised we would do or said we're going to try our darndest to do because a lot of it's projected. All of that is within that Notice of Sub Award. After you guys accept it, then we move forward with program implementation. One, it's an existing program. We're running those programs. We don't stop services to the community until those noses. Come through unless it's direct service. So when I told you guys we're still waiting on noses for our account for affordable housing, trust funds. And our welfare set aside, those aren't dollars that pay for payroll. Those are dollars that go directly into the community to help with housing and keeping utilities on and things like that. We can't utilize those funds to do that for the community until that NOSE comes through. We do have county tax rate that has contributed to our staff payroll, so we operate off of that until our noses come in for those grants that we have year after year. That continue our regular core programming. If it's new programming, which is rare, but for our behavior health programs, which are pretty new to us over the last year, when you guys have. Finally, not finally, but to us, it seems like finally because we wrote it a year and a half ago and it's finally coming to you on the board agenda. You guys sign it and from there we get started on hiring staff. Outreach to the community, educating folks on what we do, what the new program's going to do, how we get referrals and and get going on trying to complete those scopes of work. At that point in time, grant management is what kicks in because it requires effective grant management for us to, one, continue to receive those awards, two, not have to give money back. And stay compliant and ultimately make Josh happy. And you as well. A part of effective grant management is really staying on top of that budget and resource allocation. So we have to make sure that everything that's in that budget is what we're purchasing, and if there's any. Variance to what was approved in that budget in that notice of sub award that you guys sign, we have to go back to the grantor and have that conversation. Sometimes it's a formal modification. Typically, if it's less than ten percent change, they're just going to do a approval and it's not going to require a formal modification. Any significant amendments then have to come back to you for approval. So you might see amendments on from time to time and that's. We got a quarter or halfway through the grant and realized we couldn't make something happen in that budget, and so we had to go back and ask for an amendment. So that way we can most effectively utilize those funds. And all while doing that, we're staying compliant with grant requirements, which is typically a variety of different types of reporting, uh both financial and programmatic. Budget management, we talked about that. We monitor our spending uh monthly and quarterly. We do a significant quarterly review within our department to make sure that we're. Along the right lines within those budgets, the spend downs looking correct. Do we need to adjust staffing percentages and what that looks like? When it comes to braided funding, we. Our staff have a certain percentage of time they're able to work within each program. So we do a comprehensive review of that, our staff meeting that, are they not? And then making the corrective action internally is necessary. Uh monitoring and reporting, are we meeting the goals? That's part of what we presented to you guys this morning is a quarterly review of are we doing what we said we do on our scopes of work? The variety of different programs and then having those conversations with management and staff to make sure we're adjusting to to make sure we're hitting those things. All of this to say, as we're doing all of these internal reviews and adjustments, really what we're doing is we're addressing barriers. We're figuring out what the roadblocks are and we're making sure that we're paving a smooth way for our staff to be able to do what the community needs. So a lot of times it's a lot of adjustment and administrative work on the back end to make sure that our staff are able to just do their job. Uh this comes back to perhaps a future agenda items for you guys to be able to help uh advocate to streamline that process at the state level. Or potentially the federal level if that's where the the true hangup is. Because doing this for thirty-six different grants can be cumbersome. Some are easier than others. It really depends on your. State grant manager and how accessible they are and what our relationship looks like with them. Talked about reporting responsibilities. So at the end of the year, we have grant closeout and then we have to reconcile everything with uh. Josh's team, we make sure that everything matches what we requested, what's in the account that we fully expended everything. And at this point in time, sometimes you might see a de-obligation come in front of you. So if we weren't fully able to expend a grant, they have to formally de-obligate that. Um it's not funding that we had. We work on a request for reimbursement basis for ninety-nine percent of our awards. So what that means is we only request what we spent, but they do have to go through the process of de-obligating the funds that they had said were earmarked for us. We try to get ahead of that through those quarterly reviews and making sure we're spending down and reallocating those resources. Uh but sometimes this happens. Other than that, it's moving a bunch of pennies around to make sure all of the different accounts line up. After every grant, we re-reflect on what we learned from that. Year. So sometimes it's ongoing programs where we do an annual reflection of what worked well. What did we hear from the community? What did we hear from staff? What do we need to change for next year's grant? If it's a. Typically, we don't do pilot programs, although we have a couple coming up and then it's how do we sustain this? Although sustainability starts in the beginning, it's something we continue to work on. And no grant is ever truly done until you get audited, which is typically a year or so after the closeout. So uh state comes out and reviews all of our books. Checks our financial records for accuracy, make sure we didn't purchase anything that we weren't supposed to be purchasing during that grant year. Um they look at the data collected, they look at the scopes of work and all of those things, see what we did. And then they give us a report that says, here's your findings and here, or you did a great job. We don't typically have findings. We have had some that require some minor tweaks here and there, but overall, we're pretty good at at staying compliant with our grants. And that is it. I am open for any question.
No, it makes me tired just hearing it. So much work.
I just had a question on uh. Do you ever like on some of these grants that are not competitive, they're. And I don't know if you can't use them because of uh. Restraints of just getting one like a half a person or what, something like that. Do you do anything with other counties to where uh? Multiple counties can go together to get one person to cover those non-competitive grants. So you're really not competing with each other, but you're trying to solve a problem. Do you ever, do you ever deal with multi-county?
I mean, we work with multiple counties across uh different regional collaboratives, but not via funding streams. So that's a pretty innovative concept. Um. The short answer is no, right? We typically would not go after any funding that would not either. Fill a gap or meet the full need to bring on our part-time person stuff. Sometimes we'll go after funding knowing that it's going to be a contractor. Uh but we've never done shared or split funding with uh neighboring counties.
Yeah, even if you were going to a contractor, maybe if it, you know, both counties can hire the same contractor, I guess. Do you see what I'm saying?
That's I suppose a possibility for innovation for sure.
Uh thank you, Chairman Ock. They just uh observation um. Dr. Holmes, that you and your uh team obviously have a great reputation and a history of fulfilling grant requirements and utilizing those grants. To benefit the people or um entities uh that the grant was designed to benefit. Or support. So thank you for that. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments, I think. Um. I I like the fact that that you. So you work with other organizations, nonprofit stuff. I'm hoping that includes R S V P because I know they do a lot of good things here in Lion County. So I hope we're working well with them. Um you said sometimes when you're waiting for the NOSA, the EU's county funds to continue to work. When the funds become available, does it kind of get reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. And then just a an editorial comment on my part. I hate the word grant. It's not money falling out of the sky. It's a discretionary allocation of tax dollars and we need to remember that.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's no doubt that it that it's a, it's not free money, that's for sure.
Yeah, it seems like your staff spends a lot of time either applying for administrative or reporting on grants. So I hope some of that grant money covers some of that. But that's all I have.
Thank you for the presentation. Lot of good information. So we'll move on then to uh seventeen B for possible action on this. Approve a contract between Lion County and Ultimate Air. For one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Provide handyman services to individuals within senior services case management program.
Dr. Shayla Holmes, Director, Lion County Human Services for the record. This is another one of those handyman contracts. We should be wrapping those up with this agenda. There may be. One more coming forward to you um to fulfill those services under our handyman grant.
Commissioner questions? Comments? Public input? Seeing none? Motion, please.
Motion to approve a contract between Lion County and Ultimate Air for one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. To provide handyman services to individuals within the senior services case management program. Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Keller and second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move on to seventeen C for possible action. Approve a contract between Lion County Integrity Pest Management for two thousand eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. To provide pest management services to individuals within the senior services case management program.
Uh this is a contract, I believe, being funded under our Home Maker Grant, which recently expanded to include bedbug remediation. Hence the pest control. So we do see bedbugs as an issue, particularly with our older adults and being able to uh purchase them new mattresses. Uh have folks come in and do whatever they need to do to mitigate that issue. It keeps everybody healthy and happy and in their home longer. So we're excited to be able to expand those services to do this critically.
Questions? Seeing none, public input? Great motion on that, please.
Move to approve a contract between Lion County and in Integrity Pest Management for two thousand eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. To provide best management services to individuals within the senior services case management program.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We are now going to recess to reconvene as Silver Springs General Improvement District Board. Uh public participation, anybody that needs to participate publicly at this point. We have three minutes and please state your name for the record. Anybody want public comment? Seeing none, then we will go on to nineteen Utilities, nineteen A for possible action to approve a no-cost change order. With Parks Incorporated to extend the Bio Lac Rehabilitation Project completion date from. October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five to accommodate the delivery of a backup aeration blower.
Commissioner, David, we can add for the record. Um so yeah, it's good to bring a no-cost change order, you know, change orders involve either an extension of contract price or the extension of the contract time. In this case, when we started this project. Uh we were initially going to get three blower systems and motors. Uh one of them caught on fire just before the uh project had started, so we were forced to rebuild it. Um so I wanted to wait until we were completely done with the project. Through a work change directive in our contingency, so it does not impact the uh contract price. I approved ordering this as a backup motor and supply. Uh motor and blower. Um because of delays in the system, we need to extend the contract price until that arrives so that we can pay for it. Doesn't change the contract price at all. Um this project was funded eighty percent through a grant. Um so that's a, that's a very positive thing, uh grant through the state. So with that, I'm just asking to have the contract time extended so that we could have this blower arrive. Hopefully, what's happening with what's going on, you know, with the uh. You know, the delivery of items, this isn't going to extend out beyond that. This is their best estimate at this time. Uh because of these shipping delays, you know, could have another impact, but I won't know, you know, until this gets approved, it gets ordered and then we get it delivered.
Questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Sir. I love no-cost change orders. That's the only kind of change order I like.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion by nineteen A.
Chairman Ock, they have moved to approve a no-cost change order with Parkinson Corporation to extend the. Bio Lac Rehabilitation Project completion date from October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. To February twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five to accommodate the delivery of a backup aerator blower.
Great, have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Public participation for the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, any public participation from. Anyone in the audience, there's hardly anybody here, so I'll look for the Zoom. I see nothing on Zoom. So we will adjourn and reconvene as the Lion County Board of Commissioners. Twenty-one, agenda requests. Anything for you, Commissioner Hendricks?
No.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, let's just try to do this again and see if we can do it the right way. I'd like a an item for discussion and review and possible amendments. Of the Citizen Advisory Board Handbook and Citizen Advisory Board Bylaws.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. I can turn on my mic here. That might help. I would like to invite um Scott Kipper or someone from uh the Nevada Division of Insurance. To speak to us. And and uh. Where I'm going with that is just to discuss. Their role in um kind of working with and um. I don't want to say patrolling, but monitoring um. Insurance companies and how they. May or may not gouge um. They're not the state, but uh insurance companies on on their pricing on auto insurance and other items. So I'd just like to hear from them what their role is um in protecting the public.
I don't have any, so we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hendricks? Commissioner Jacobson? Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I wanted to make an announcement uh on. Saturday, October fifth. They're having a uh. There's a new uh thing in Lion County called the Comfort House and. What they're basically doing, let me see if I can find their information. Should have got it out earlier. Their purpose is to serve as both an emergency shelter and a foster home. Accommodating up to eight school-aged children per home in rural Nevada, recognizing. Recognizing the critical gap in services, particularly in Lion County and its surrounding rural areas, including Fallon, Alcoa, and Trump. There's more on their website. Comfort House Nevada dot org, but their first uh, their first start of this thing is in Silver Springs. And so they just opened, they just bought a building and so they can start having uh. Emergency shelter for foster children and they're doing a fundraiser at uh the Veterans Healing Camp on. Saturday, yeah, twelve o'clock P M. To six o'clock P M, dancing and all kinds of stuff. So I'd like people to look into it if they. Want to support that activity.
Okay. Mentioned a Fun Days in Smith Valley, uh big activity on Sunday. So if you're in Smith Valley, want to have a good time, go, go to the Fun Days, the Dressler Park. Anything further? Then we'll go ahead and move to the final public participation. We'll have held at this time. And. Ah, okay, yes, we have. Uh Mandy German. Three minutes, you know who you are and go ahead and take your case.
Uh, good afternoon. Um I attended the Stagecoach Area Drainage Master Plan uh presentation on September seventeenth, which was very well done. Uh so a layman could understand it. And in the postcard we received, it does say that the presentation material. Would be posted no later than a week after that meeting. And I have checked the website several times because I would like to um look at that plan. And it still is not posted, so um I guess I'm just requesting that uh we could get that posted so the residents can take a look at that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public? Participation? Seeing none, the uh. Regular meeting is over at eleven fifty-four and we do have a closed session today, so we'll be starting that. Quickly after this, so it's eleven fifty-four and meeting is adjourned.